I'd like to call this meeting to order. Thank you, sorry we're a little late. Welcome, today's Tuesday, November 13th. Welcome to this month's board meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance for those who would like to participate or remain seated.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll also, Commissioner Ivankic will lead us in our welcome.
Repeat after me. We offer you peace.
We offer you peace.
We offer you friendship.
We offer you friendship.
We offer you love.
We offer you love.
We hear your needs.
Hear your needs.
We see your beauty.
We see your beauty.
We feel your feelings.
We feel your feelings.
We are all smart in our own way.
We are all smart in our own way.
We honor that in you.
We honor that in you.
Let us work together.
Let us work together.
Okay, first on the agenda is, does anyone have any items they would like to remove from the consent agenda for the committee meetings?
If it requires removal, I do, I just have some questions about the, those two items on the consent agenda.
Commissioner Curry, both items?
Well, I think they're connected, right? One's just a-
The routine financial reports and the routine hiring?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, just the hiring.
Okay.
Okay.
So we'll 4B. 4B. So make a motion to amend.
So I make a motion to amend the agenda to add in, where do I put this?
Keep it where it is?
Put it all the way at the bottom?
What? Keep it where it is? No? Just keep it where it is, but just-
Keep it where it is.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
But it's off the consent agenda.
Off the consent agenda.
Great. Anyone else?
I'd like to make a motion to move several items from the agenda and put them elsewhere. Numbers 12 through 14, after 8.
So just for the audience, that's policy changes, the new voices law ad hoc committee policy recommendation to the board, the resolution on elementary school staffing, 12 through 14.
Yes.
You'd like to move-
I'll second that.
We'd like to move that after the commissioner, student commissioners' report.
So we'll become item 9, 10, and 11.
I would like to make a motion to add a section, sorry.
So I think we need to vote on the motions?
Yes, yeah. Okay, so all those in favor of pulling item B, 4B, and moving items number 19, excuse me, items number 12, 13, and 14 up to item, make them items 9, 10, and 11. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the motion carries and the agenda has been-
I would like to make a motion to add section 9D, a committee report on the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee.
Second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. All right. Next. Yeah? Does anyone have an, yeah, does anyone, oh, will someone give me a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I so move.
Thank you, Commissioner Pillsbury.
I'll second.
Commissioner Wick, any discussion? Okay, let's vote. All those in favor of adopting the agenda, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you. We'll move-
Do you want to make a motion or do you want the exec session?
Yes, so I make a motion to move into executive session under the statute because premature general public knowledge will put this district at substantial advantage to discuss one of the more of the following, personnel matters.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. So the school board and its leaders will move into executive session and we will reconvene to go over item number four after executive session. So up next on the agenda is public comment. Thank you.
Start with Fran Brock, up on desk is Andrew Stiles.
Hi, welcome Fran.
Good evening, I'm Fran Brock, teacher here at VHS and a former co-chair of the VHS Self-Study Committee that worked on the 2016 NEASC accreditation evaluation. I bet you didn't see that coming. My initial thank you goes to the voters of Burlington who approved their bond that will revitalize Burlington High School. But I also want to thank you, the school board, for helping to push through the plans started in 2013 so a dream that really extends back further than five years finally will be realized. Your leadership and continued oversight will enable our administrators to offer NEASC concrete evidence that the high school will meet if not exceed the accessibility and other health, safety, and educational requirements necessary for a clean accreditation. As we all move forward to finalize the plans, it feels good to know that our city's high school will be able to provide our students with the necessary and appropriate spaces and equipment for the educational programs and services they deserve. Again, thank you for your leadership and oversight of this project that reflects the investment Burlingtonians have agreed to make in the city's future.
Thank you Fran.
Andrew Stiles, and up next, Teri Lassard.
Good evening, I'm Andrew Stiles with Burlington Education Association representing the hundreds of teachers and paraeducators and all of our educators in Burlington. Tonight, our elementary schools are in crisis mode right now. The continued cuts of the last few years have compounded with cuts this year and have turned what was already a negative situation into a crisis in our elementary schools. One of the things I love about this job is going from school to school and talking with teachers about what's going on. I love hearing about the successes they have with students and the new teaching practices that they're learning and trying out. Unfortunately though, this is not always a positive experience. This year is showing a major theme for me and our teachers, an overexerted system that is receiving less and less support. I'll share a couple of examples with you. The first is a story of a student who needs a one-on-one support from a paraeducator every day. The para works with the student to make sure that the student is able to do the work, breaks down the information so that the student is confused, and works with the teacher to advocate for her students' learning needs. This is just a small glimpse into the services provided by our paraeducators to their students. In this case though, the paraeducator is being pulled away from her job several times, several times this year to cover classrooms as a substitute. Once she's gone, the student's full individual education plan is no longer being amended. The support that that student needs to work through the day is gone. The person who was hired to support the needs of the student and ensure equitable access to education is gone. All the students in the class suffer as a result. Second is the story of a special educator in our district. Because of the lack of staffing at her school, she has been told to make do with what she has. When we spoke a few weeks back, she had filled in as a paraeducator over the course of 16 days. This means that not only were the students she working with missing the support of the highly skilled paraeducators in our system, but all of this teacher's students were missing out on the programming that she develops for them. Over and over, teachers are being asked to do more with less, elementary staffing is down, direct services to students are being gutted, yet we keep raising spending and taxes on our community. Last year, a budget was presented and the board members at the time asked what would be the cost of retaining positions that were proposed to be eliminated. The answer was given and the board at the time agreed to keep those positions, yet those positions were still cut. This year, each school lost an interventionist who worked directly with students. The interventionists were replaced, were replaced with coaches who are great at helping students but have been discouraged from working directly with students. Teachers do want the professional development and the time to reflect with other teachers and their coaches to improve this practice, but not at the expense of teaching positions that provide direct, direct instruction to some of our most vulnerable students. We are pleased to see that you are seeking to restore a couple of those cuts this evening. Doing so will clearly state to our students and our community that the district is finally working to reverse some of the cuts to direct student services. While the elementary teaching staff sees a long road ahead as we try to resolve and build the schools our students deserve, we hope that this is an indication of the board's support for increasing direct student services and services to assess our elementary educators through the coaching program. After all, we know that you share our dedication to Burlington's children.
Thank you Andrew.
Teri Lassard, up next, Karen Rubin.
Hi, welcome Teri.
Hi. Good evening, my name is Teri Lassard and for the past three years, I've been the district literacy coach and now I am one of the embedded instructional coaches working with the teachers at Champlain Elementary School. I'm here tonight to speak in support of the embedded coaching model as I know that this is the time during which the board is beginning to consider budgetary decisions for next year. Having been a coach for the past three years, sorry, I can't read this, allows me to see the distinct benefits of the embedded coaching model. Working with one school with 16 homeroom teachers instead of six schools with almost 100 teachers allows me to build trusting relationships, to support differentiated ongoing professional practice, allows for impromptu professional conversations, as well as allowing me the opportunity to work in collaboration with and to support the principal with a deeper level of instructional understanding than they may have. A coach's work with a teacher does not just impact one teacher nor one class of 20 students. It improves the quality of instruction the students of that teacher receives throughout the teacher's entire career. If an instructional coach with 15, works with 15 teachers in a year, the impact of that year's work ripples through the, improving the daily education of about 6,000 students over a 20-year career. This is not a specific, there's not a specific amount of time one can say that it takes a school to move from introducing to embracing a coaching model. There are many circumstantial, circumstantial variables too numerous to name in two minutes, but we know that the timeframe is not nine weeks nor just one year. Change research shows that for any true change to happen, it takes a minimum of three years and closer to five years. I know there's a lot of competing budgetary issues, but I will say, I'm going off script here, I'm doing a little Donald Trump. I would say that when I look at the data in our district, we truly have a tier one issue, not necessarily a tier two issue, which isn't to say that we don't need to support interventionists, but we really do need to be looking at tier one and support for impactful first-tier instruction and I believe coaching can do that. If the board decides not to continue the coaching model, I will have a job for next year. I am on the top of the first page of the seniority list for our district. I am not here for fear that I will not have a job next year. I will simply move back into a classroom setting for the next few years before I retire and those 40 or so students will have excellent instruction. But when I retire, that will be that, my impact will be gone. I'm here tonight advocating for this embedded model because I believe in a broader vision. I believe in a vision of highly skilled teachers not only impacting a few students but impacting many students over a long period of time. We have a model to do this and I wholeheartedly believe in this model. We have a model that will allow for supporting teachers, all teachers, to move forward in their practice. That model is the embedded coaching model and I sit here tonight asking for your support. Please let the embedded model continue and let us do our job. Let the coaches make a difference for the students of BSD. Thank you.
Karen Rubin, up next Christina Erickson. So Christina, and up next is Mary Mitchell.
Hi, welcome Christina.
Thank you. Good evening, I'm Christina Erickson, I'm a parent at the Sustainability Academy and my comments really speak about the Sustainability Academy because that's the school that I have most experience with. I'll get a little closer.
Good pass.
How about that? Okay. So, like many of the elementary schools, SA started this school year with significant staffing reductions and other significant job description changes. I've heard the following concerns from teachers, parents, and school board members. The reduction in teaching staff has caused six of our nine classes to be mixed grade configurations with no guarantee of what the arrangement will be the next year. This makes covering the curriculum mandated by the district difficult, meeting student needs more challenging, and workloads for remaining teachers inequitable as teaching a multi-grade class is much more challenging than a single grade configuration. The 1-2 mixed classrooms have been particularly challenging as the literacy and math levels are significantly different among the children. The reduction in special education staffing means that we have students who are not having services in their IEP plans being met. SA has the highest percentage of students on IEPs in the district and the short staffing is affecting the learning of these students negatively while special educators have caseloads that are very high and stressful. The reductionist, the reduction in interventionists mean that we have not been able to be faithful to our double intervention blocks that have been so successful in reducing the achievement gap in our population. These double intervention blocks are carefully crafted to meet the needs of students in small group instruction and now are not happening with the frequency, intensity, and duration that we feel will ensure success for all students. One of the issues I had raised earlier and I haven't heard any resolution on this point is that we have paraeducators in our school who are in financial crisis due to the issues when their healthcare insurance was switched last year. Due to this transition, we have educators who are now facing collection agents and threats to their credit as they have accrued significant medical bills during the switch in the insurance system. Another example is the SA library budget has been $2,000 for the last 20 years, which comes to $11.43 per student, which is the second lowest of all of our elementary schools. While the age of our collection has improved by three points-
We're gonna switch.
Getting switched? How about now? Is that okay? Our, the age of our collection has improved by three points last year largely due to a CLIF grant that we received. This still leaves us with a collection that is only 5% from 2013 or newer. The average age of our books is from 1998, which was a great year, I was in college, loved that year, but probably not what we want our library looking like. The shift from our sustainability coach to an instructional coach has brought changes as well. I think as the instructional coaches are promising in the ripple effect that they have with our teachers and students, and while our current instructional coach is actively integrating sustainability concepts throughout her work as an instructional coach, there is a fear among parents that our magnet theme is not written down somewhere in these job descriptions and it could go away with any turnover in staffing, which we hope will not happen. And I know that it doesn't make sense, nor it is comfortable, to pit one role versus another. In ideal setting, we'd have all of the above, plus my dream of a social justice educator, a food systems educator, a naturalist, go imagine that. But in the fiscal reality, and we know that's not the case, I do really appreciate all the elementary school principals coming together to look at the needs across the district as they continue budget planning for the next year. Finally, given the goal of the magnet schools, which was created over 10 years ago now, was supposed to create social economic balance, this has not yet happened. It has improved slightly at Sustainability Academy, but we have not achieved those goals. So I think the big question on the table is what is the future of magnet schools in this district? And in the meantime, how can we, the district, board members, teacher staff, and parents, support our current goals and our theme? We would like the district and the school board to look at this and work with us to set new goals in the, for the next 10 years. So as we continue in this budget year and start into the next budget planning process, I hope that we can adequately address our special education needs, maintain what makes us special as a sustainability magnet school, and help meet at least the basic financial needs of our staff. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak at public?
Mary Mitchell.
Sorry, Mary Mitchell.
That's okay.
Welcome, Mary.
Hi. I am, can you hear me? I am speaking tonight to express our continued support for the reinstatement of the 1.0 FTE grade two teacher position for this year at JJ Flynn. If everyone in the audience could raise their hands that would show the support to this board that you believe the reinstatement should happen now, if you could do so and let the board know who is here and thinks that reinstating this position would be beneficial, please show them that we came out to let them know we're here. We appreciate the board's willingness to hear our concerns and want to share that we do understand that this may be a little disruptive, but feel the benefits for the students' academic, social, and emotional needs will be best served by making this happen. What is best for students should be our guiding principle and this is what is best. We have advocated for eight months. We have documented, discussed, showed evidence of why this third classroom needs to be restored for the best interest of all the students at our school. Let us be clear that we are advocating for the full-time grade two position. Additionally, our neighbors, colleagues, and students at the Sustainability Academy are asking for their special educator to be reinstored, reinstated, and we ask you to consider their request as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak at public comment?
Okay, moving on, on the agenda would be board reflection. Does any board member wish to reflect? Okay, thank you.
I would like to reflect. I would like to just say thank you for-
Commissioner Kerry.
Just thank you for that information again that we've heard from very concerned members of our constituency and in general, I think the, you know, the removal of positions from the elementary schools is obscene, quite obscene. And it needs to be a direction that we try to remedy, we need to try to remedy that direction next year and years after as we go through a transformation in BSD. So I thank you for your testimony again, we heard it in April and May, I've heard it from many different places and here it is again tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kerry. Commissioner Curry.
Yeah, I'd also like to thank everybody for their passion and commitment and educating the board on the experiences you're having every day. Which one? So I think most of you know that I've been on the board for five years and it has been an incredibly difficult and challenging time. There's no doubt for everybody, for our kids, for our teachers, for our parents, for administrators. And I know it's taken its toll and I just want to, you know, provide a little context. I just sent all board members a linear history of the budgets from fiscal year 14 when we encountered the deficit up till now and in that year when Superintendent Howard Smith was here, we lost 37 and a half staff positions because of the deficit and restructuring. And it takes a long time for an institution this size to come back from that. Some of you may not have been here, some of you may not have been aware of what we went through, but you know, losing 37 and a half positions is the reason why we were able to create a fiscally sustainable district and not have AOT take, AOE, sorry, maybe AOT should take over, AOE take over our district at that time. So, you know, then we made a commitment as a strategic policy goal to be fiscally sustainable so that we would not encounter the situation before and on the last page of the document I shared with you, we had a report done by a consultant with the city, co-funded by a guy named Ed Gomo who has probably 50 years of experience in public administration, budgeting, and finance. And there's a chart there that shows you for 10 years, the district overspent every year. And then when we hit that cumulative deficit, at the same time, I think people have heard this story before, we lost over $4 million in federal and state and local funds. And we continue to lose that federal money. So the reason I'm discussing this and articulating it is, for example, last year we lost the federal money to pay for the multicultural liaisons. And these are the choices that our community faces in the face of the star of the beast, federal, you know, conspiracy that we have really, conspiracy against local government that we have that forces us to all, you know, what we're seeing at the state, to all scramble and public education is getting starved desperately. And we know, we all know what's happening and we all agree that it's not what we want. I think most of us agree on this board, I think we all agree. This is not what we want. At the same time, you know, our role as commissioners is to look across the district and govern in a way that is consistent with all the needs of the schools, all the needs of the community, and that is a very challenging proposition. And so I'm framing this because we have a set of strategic goals that we designed to try and inform the budgeting and inform allocations and we have an equity formula to try and achieve that. It's not always going to be perfect and it's not always going to make people happy and-
Thank you, Commissioner Curry.
That's not our role, but I just want to reflect on that because I think it's pertinent to the resolution that's going to be presented tonight so that that context is out there.
Thank you, Commissioner Curry.
I did not think I was going to reflect tonight, but I will. I was on the board for 21 years and we thought of children first and I don't apologize for the deficits that Commissioner Curry talks about. I've been embarrassed before and I said, no, if there was a need in the school, we took care of that need. We looked to make sure that our children were educated, they had an opportunity to learn. Now, when I went around asking people to support this big bond issue for VHS, we had a lot of significant discussions and one of them, the bottom line was, they want to make sure that we don't, that if we're really talking about narrowing the gap, we're actually doing it. And when I hear of some of the hires that the former board did, I'm not sure that they, they talked a good game, but I'm not sure they really were narrowing the gap with actually direct instruction. And that is the most important thing that we need to have here. Our, we as board members do not, you know, look to, you know, have to be toeing the line of what the administration does. If we see something that is not in line with what we really think we should be doing, that is making sure we're taking care of the needs of our most vulnerable children, our kindergartners, our preschoolers, our elementary students, then we need, we need to step in and the bottom line is that we have to find the money. Now, I used to be apologetic about those deficits and I'm still not sure whether they actually were there, but there were people that wanted to have that spin so they can have their fun. But now I'm back in the board and my main goal here is to make sure that we hire people who are dedicated to serving the children first. And that is exactly why I am on the board and I guess I appreciate this chance to reflect on some of my thinking.
Thank you, Commissioner Pillsbury. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the agenda, thank you very much, public comment and commissioners. The next on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. We will be approving the routine financial reports, items A and then items-
5A through F.
5A through F.
Minutes.
Minutes, of the committee minutes.
I so move.
Second?
Great, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries, thank you. Now we will take up item B, routine hiring. Yep, Commissioner Curry.
Thanks, so I was just curious about the, getting this- So I was just curious about the, getting this at this point in the year, I'm just not familiar with that, and how the district knows to budget for the increases when teachers get certified, either their masters or whatever certification they get that results in a budget increase. Like, how do you know how to budget for that?
We actually don't. Nate probably makes a, oh, sorry.
Turn the on button.
Nate Laboring?
So if I under, is it working? I can't talk.
One minute.
That's, yes.
No.
I'll speak loudly. We, so, we don't know. We just have to do a ballpark estimate based on prior year's experience. So we just put in a lump sum number and we wait to see what happens.
Okay. Thanks. I just wanted to have a little lens into that.
Thank you, Commissioner Curry. So, yep, we will now adopt, vote on approving that on the agenda, item B for
Make a motion to approve for B.
Second.
Second.
Wick, thank, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the chair's report. I was going to speak on behalf of the bond, but I know we have a lot of district leaders here tonight, so I will submit my comments to the board.
You should speak.
Skip over.
All right. In the interest of time, I was worried. I do. Now, I put it away. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. All right. On behalf of the Burlington School Board, I would like to thank all the Burlington residents and voters for their generosity and for supporting our students and staff. This successful BHS bond vote is a crucial and long overdue step on the road to renewing our tired and deficient high school building and is a collective affirmation of Burlington's commitment to a safe, accessible, and leading-edge center for learning. Our future students and our community at large will benefit greatly from this important investment in BHS. And I want to personally thank Commissioner Barlow and Commissioner Curry for leading the campaign of BHS. The campaign. The board would like to take a moment to acknowledge those dedicated individuals that were instrumental in their commitment and leadership. We would not be here today if it wasn't for the countless volunteer and community, countless volunteer hours and community effort, and for those whose work began as early as ten years ago in 2008 and earlier. The board recognizes the BHS Steering Committee, Resource Committee, the Reenvisioning Committee, and our board would like to acknowledge former BHS principal Amy Mellon Camp, community members Kate Stein, Vicky Smith, Sina Daly, Jim Holloway, Lorraine Carter Lovejoy, Karen Downey, and board member, current board member Martine Gulick. The work at the initial stages provided our district the foundation to present the BHS bond to our voters. And over the past three years, Superintendent O'Bang has prioritized with Facilities Director Marty Spalding the importance of BHS reenvisioning. Finally, we recognize Mayor Moreau Weinberger's commitment, along with city councillors, all the city councillors, especially Dave Hartnett and Brian Pine. Thank you to everyone for their unwavering commitment to our, and to our communications specialist Russ Elick, who put BHS and our BHS reenvisioning campaign online and in print. And to our educators, our staff members, our paraeducators, and our community, again, we thank you wholeheartedly on behalf of the board and district. Next on the agenda is the student commissioners' report. Welcome, Saban.
So, just to report, a lot of things going on lately. The musical is coming up Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, The Little Mermaid. Be great if you all could go and see that. I have a couple friends, and I will be personally going Thursday night, so you all, you should all go. It's going to be great. Had the Harvest Dance last Friday. I didn't go personally, but I heard a lot of great things. Model UN had their trip to Brown University. That also was a success, from what I heard. The cross-country team finished with New England's this weekend, so that is, I believe, the last of the fall sports. And I think it's been a great year for all our sports. Everyone I talked to seemed like they had a good year. And finally, we had six student athletes attend the statewide Student Leadership Conference on Monday and Tuesday, and I thought it was great, and everyone I talked to said it was amazing. So it's been a good month for BHS and students involved.
Thank you, Saban. All right, now we will move to item number, we said the
Formerly known as twelve.
Formerly known as twelve, under policy changes. Commissioner Wick.
Thank you, Chair Will. We've got two items tonight, item A, which are items for second reading and possible adoption by resolution, and then items for first reading. Items for second reading are those items that we deliberated upon at length at our last monthly meeting. And to that end, I will make the motion, and if someone seconds it, then if there's any more deliberation, well, then Chair Will will call on you. Other than that, we'll then vote upon it. So I'd like to, with respect to the document posted on board docs under number twelve A, items for second reading and resolution for adoption, which you've all had a chance to see, if you've been on board docs or received this, I would like to waive the reading, and I would like to make a motion to waive the reading and adopt the resolution.
Is there a second?
Thank you, Commissioner Vanc.
Discussion.
Any discussion? Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chair Will. There was a question about the election of officers, and Commissioner Wick and I did check with Attorney McNeil, who signed off on those changes.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. All right. Commissioner Barlow, thank you.
Hi. I apologize. I wasn't here at last month's meeting, so I didn't have a chance to deliberate with you all, and despite my best intentions to watch the R E T N tape, I come here without knowing what was discussed. But I do have two, I have several questions, but I'm going to limit my questions to just two. Policy two point ten, is this, this is new? The superintendent shall not fail to develop, maintain, or regularly share with the board an objective and detailed scorecard or rubric that tracks and measures the progress and success of each of our schools in achieving our global ends. Isn't this simply a monitoring report? I mean, and do we need a, do we need a change to do that?
The committee, the Policy and Governance Committee, has studied materials provided by John Carver and his team and other school districts who've been doing policy governance for a long time. And we have found that items such as this, in other words, things that are this detailed, do actually exist, both in Carver materials, which I'd be happy to share with you, and I'll give credit to Kathy Ohwell for providing that book to me. Thank you. So it's not unusual, and I think it's also consistent with Michael Healy, who said, okay, in policy governance, you start general, and then you ask yourself, all right, given that the implementer, the superintendent, may use any reasonable interpretation of your statement, are you comfortable with that? If the answer is yes, you stop there. If the answer is no, you go to the next level of detail, and then you ask yourself again, okay, does this next level of detail, are we comfortable with any reasonable interpretation of it? If the answer is yes, we stop there. If the answer is no, we go to the next level. So my response to that is that this will be tracked by monitoring report, absolutely. But that I think, I'll just speak for myself, that it would be wonderful to have a scorecard or rubric that tracks and measures the progress and success of our schools in achieving our global ends. I think that's a wonderful pronouncement, and I think we all probably would agree, including the superintendent, is a good thing for us to keep track of. It has to do with making this more objective, to the extent that we can be objective. So that's the best answer I can offer you.
Okay, I guess my confusion was that the scorecard or the rubric would just, it would be embedded in the monitoring report, so you're just being more precise about what you want the monitoring report to show?
It appears we're asking, by virtue of this policy, that such a scorecard or rubric first be created and maintained, and then I agree, it may make sense to provide it in the context of a monitoring report. So actually, maybe we're exactly on the same page, because maybe at the end of the day, that's how we monitor compliance with this, but I think it provides us valuable information that we don't have today. And I actually think it's stated generally enough that it gives a discretion to the superintendent to implement it in the way he sees fit, based on his expertise, not ours. I mean, I couldn't tell you what should be in that scorecard or rubric, but I do want to know. How are the schools doing? And let's try to make it objective.
And then may I file?
Yes, Commissioner.
So the other one I was curious about was two point four B. The superintendent of the Burlington School District shall not fail to regularly and timely, one, disclose and educate the board on the current budget, including providing regular and timely budget-to-actual reports; two, provide the board with actual financials as compared to previously budgeted amounts for any concluded year; and three, provide the board with an ongoing, on an ongoing basis during budgeted, budget planning season, October to January, with as much detailed budget information as reasonably practicable to enable the board to fully and authentically understand the budget, its categories and details, and to identify trends over time, to make informed decisions regarding the proposed or recommended budget or budget options. And I guess my question is more about, having been through the budgeting process in previous years, this is exactly what is done during budgeting season, and why do we now need to enshrine it in policy? I guess is the question. And I'm not saying it's necessarily bad, it just, this is not, this is what we already do.
So my response to that, having also been through that same budgeting season that you went through, and I'm glad that we, if memory serves, almost unanimously approved that budget together on January 23rd, I actually had never seen a line item budget up to that evening. We had never seen it. It was budgeting by PowerPoint, which I give the superintendent and Nathan a lot of credit. They did a great job, and frankly, we've been delivering surpluses, so they're doing a lot right. And so this is not intended to discredit them in any way, but it came from, and those on the Policy and Governance Committee agreed, that it came from a place that we felt like we didn't have enough information, and we wanted to be more specific in our policy governance. We wanted to go that one-level, detailed, drill-down. And one thing that I mentioned last time, and I'm not going to belabor, is, well, I think, I'm giving, I can only give you my own personal opinion, which I think this is helpful. This is the stuff that, if you're saying, this is the stuff we already get, Jeff, we don't need to put it in our policies, then at least it's stuff you also think we need and want. So that's good. So at least we agree that far. You may not believe it needs to be in our policies. I and others who moved this forward to the full board do, but either way, then I guess we're going to get this information or continue to get this information, which is wonderful.
It doesn't say line item budget in here. It says, but I understand your point, and when requested, I think we should note that the administration has given us all the budget information that we have requested.
You do.
Yeah. So I think, I want to give great credit to the administration for at least last year's budget, which I was involved in.
Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chair Will. So I think that there's a difference between practice and policy, right? So practice is, hey, every year, Yao and Nathan give us this stuff, and that's fine. But at some point, Yao and Nathan will not be here, right? Maybe, you know, and, or that the board will have turnover, and there'll be different people with different expectations. So taking what's practice and making it policy ensures that it's consistent from year to year. And I think it's not, it's true, not just for this, but for other things that we work with Yao and his staff on, we should codify inside policy.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Curry.
So my comments are about the, a couple other sections. One of them is about, I'm sorry, I moved things around. One of them was the cause or allow, the recruitment or hiring of administrators, faculty, or staff without a detailed and authentic stakeholder engagement process appropriate to the type of employee to be hired.
Which section?
I don't know, I'm sorry.
Two point two.
Are you sure you're not looking at the first reading document?
I'm for sure looking at the second.
Here. Okay. Did I, so cause or allow recruitment or hiring?
Oh, there it is, two dot two B, page one, top of the page. Thank you. Sorry.
Okay. So first of all, I don't think there's a two point two A anywhere.
Okay, so the intention there, and I could have been more explicit, is the existing two dot two section will be renumbered as, relettered as A. This is B, and then there's C. So the, and I have the policies, that's what I'll call technical cleanup.
Okay, yeah, yeah. So, but substantively, I have a specific comment about this, and then just a broader reflection on a lot of the policies related to two point two, recruitment, hiring, and treatment of staff. So I guess my question is, what are the metrics for measuring authentic and appropriate? That appropriateness test appear, that language appears somewhere else, and I just find that really problematic because it's subjective. And I anticipate you might say, superintendent interprets, I'm concerned that it sets up kind of a, you know, a dynamic where there's a very subjective kind of stakeholder, inconsistent stakeholder engagement process, because, you know, what might happen, might be available in terms of the district's capacity to do something one time doesn't mean that it would be, the district would have the capacity to do it again. And so, you know, I guess my question is, what are the outcomes that we're looking for, and what's the appropriateness test? And so those are questions, and then, you know, I kind of move on to the next set of whole recommendations is about, in the event the superintendent wishes to recommend the hiring or permanent interim building leader. Again, like that's, this is a very instructional recommendation, which has like very specific itemized documents that we want. And for that reason, I would just recommend saying that that language should be, submit a monitoring report at least five business days prior to seeking the board's approval with the following information, that all that, you know, posted job description, resume should all be in a monitoring report. And we say, submit that at least five to eight days, any time of the year, before you want to hire someone, give us all that stuff. That is very operational, and I'm not arguing with it, I'm just saying it's not a policy, it's instructions for what we want to see, for documents we want to see. So that whole section, I just recommend be a different like, you know, requirement, to be a monitoring report. It doesn't have to be on the schedule, it would just be required five days before any hiring. Similarly, the organizational chart, I mean, I'm not going to, it's not worth it. That's a doc, that's like a report. So I think people are just having a hard time understanding the difference between policy and reporting and procedures, and for that reason, overall, I would just recommend that we return to a regular training session with Michael Healy, first and foremost. That's a recommendation. But similarly, with the scorecard and the tracking and the measuring, those are, those are all reports, those are not policies if you're asking for documents that give you data and information. So that's my overall comment. Beyond that, I would like to footnote that the stakeholder engagement process being appropriate concerns me, and I want to tie that to comments about the first reading of the proposed policy two point two C, because I think it's, there's redundancy there. And then it goes into a, a different model for hiring and recruitment, and I feel like the board does not have a lot of information, you know, I feel like the personnel committee has not educated the board on what our hiring and recruitment procedures are. I mean, we know the policy, and I think I've probably received one monitoring report since we went to policy governance, we've kind of had one monitoring report for every policy. But it seems to me that the personnel committee was created to go out and kind of like recon, like get information for the board and educate us on what the existing system is, what the existing procedures are. I don't even know, and so I feel like I don't even know, and so I feel like I can't make this decision because I don't have a context. I don't know what I'm, I don't know what I'm changing, because I have no baseline. And so the other thing is, I think there are costs associated with the changes. And I, as I've heard you say in the past, you know, we typically need to know what the cost implications are before making a decision. So I would have that concern as well. So overall, you know, I, I think that, I don't want to assume that the goals here, I don't want to assume what these goals are. I think there are some good goals here. I just find the language, the way they're presented problematic. I feel like I don't have enough information about our existing, what we do now, to know what we're changing and why.
Thank you, Commissioner Curry. So I'll have Commissioner Wick speak to 2.2B, and Commissioner Fisher speak to 2.2C.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I'll just be brief, but I do want to have the opportunity out of respect. So speaking to 2 dot 2B, where it says, "Such hiring procedures shall not fail to include a detailed and authentic stakeholder engagement process," et cetera, et cetera. So that is a broad statement, but as you know, in our policies, if we make a broad policy statement like that, the superintendent then has the right to make any reasonable interpretation, which we cannot really object to. Our policies allow him. So I guess I'd say that the committee was comfortable with this broad statement of giving him discretion to determine what, in his reasonable discretion, an authentic stakeholder engagement process is or will be. And if we find that we don't like it, or we believe it's not the one that we think is appropriate, you know, again, the definition of appropriate is rather subjective, then we could further, we could make it more detailed in the future. But right now, we're okay with the generality. What we're just trying to, I believe the committee is just trying to put in place is the idea that we really want a detailed and authentic, a real stakeholder engagement process when it comes to hiring, and then the superintendent likewise gets to choose what is appropriate with regard to an engagement process with respect to each type of employee. So clearly, certain employees, higher level, deserve more of a process than perhaps what I'll call, for lack of a better word, lower level hires, whatever that means. But, you know, my point is, it is broad, but that gives him a lot of discretion, which I think is a good thing. But then with respect to 2 dot 2C, I'll pass that over to Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wick. So I think both of these speak to the point where Superintendent Obang has said, "Just tell me what you want to do, what you want me to do, right? Tell me how you want me to operate." And both of these are, I think, in reaction to how the district and how the superintendent has been operating. And it's the board's attempt to say, "Okay, this is what's going on, we'd like you to do it differently, and here's our expectation." And I want to respectfully point out that your issue with, what I heard is your issue with 2.2B was that was too broad, and your issue with 2.2C was that it was too narrow. So I think both of these are attempts to provide guidance to the superintendent, and both of these came out of direct experiences. 2.2C came out of a direct experience where a leader recommendation was made to hire, and I said, "That's insufficient for me." So I want to give him more guidance about what I expect in terms of information, but it doesn't, I don't think it's, it's specific on how he gathers or, you know, who, how he manages the candidate pool. It's, it's a report, like we were talking about. And so I'm comfortable with it because it's giving him guidance on how we want to operate.
So I guess I would ask, well, two things. So we're in agreement on the content. It's not the, it's not the content they just read, it's just, as you just said, a report. So as a report, that literally means a monitoring report in policy governance. So that's a tool, and it should be codified as a report, and we can put language in that says, "Give us this report five days before, or 10 days before you recommend," or whatever. And then the stakeholder thing, what, what is your standard for a stakeholder? What does that mean, a stakeholder? I mean, how is, how is the board to know what to expect? What, you know, it just, what's a stakeholder? Who's, you know, what does that mean?
Commissioner Wick?
Yeah. I think that if the board believes that we need to further define stakeholder, which is a pretty common term, which I think almost anyone in this room can understand who the stakeholders of, are in this school system, their teachers, their parents, there are everyone connected to the school district.
And so in that case, if you're asking for an authentic stakeholder process to be part of the hiring process, again, I'd go back to, how is our hiring process designed now? And then secondly, I would just raise the point that in the past, we've had stakeholder engagement, and it, I think Nikki could probably tell us how much it costs to train everybody in implicit bias training, EEOC training to prevent discrimination, and other hiring laws and regulations that the district has to follow, and confidentiality. So those four requirements have a cost, and I would like to understand the cost implications of this before making a decision. I think it's incumbent upon us to do that, given our strategic goal for fiscal sustainability. And speaking of cost, we are literally taking money away from the kids.
Commissioner Curry.
No, I'm not done. We are literally taking money away from the kids to put money into hiring practices.
All right. Thank you.
And I would like to see that, and or just note here, in this room, where people want money, and have said they want to support direct instruction, and they want to support children, this does the opposite. It diverts resources to a cost we don't carry now. It has been expensive in the past, I believe Nikki could speak to that. And furthermore, in what, two out of those cases, the district was sued as a result of the administrators that were chosen.
Thank you, Commissioner Curry. I'm going to ask.
No, I'm not done. I am speaking, I have the floor. And we, so in one case, we had community involvement in the hiring, and the, we were, district was sued by the person who did not work out. In another case, we hired someone who did not supervise the administrative staff, and we were sued by the Human Rights Commission. And then in two other cases, the administrators did not work out. So it's been very costly for the district, and I think there's a conversation we could have about if we want a different model, what that looks like, but we should do it with intentionality, and we should understand the cost implications.
Thank you, Commissioner Curry. Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to remind that we agree that Commissioner questions were limited to two minutes, and the chair is the facilitator of the meeting, and I take that very seriously.
I did not remember that we had a two-minute limit.
Thank you, Commissioner Curry. Any more discussion? Superintendent Obang.
Thank you, Chair. Testing, one, two, three. Testing. Can you hear that in the back?
Yeah.
There. Thank you, Chair Wool. I want to thank the Policy Governance Committee for taking the time to put together this robust sort of compendium of policy changes. I know it's difficult to figure out how to direct the superintendent, and we need that conversation. And my, I have a couple of points, and just going to, just in interest of time, just put them out, so the board can reflect on it. At the last meeting, I did make a number of comments specifically around some of the policy changes, and also recommended that the, there's a discussion with Mike Healy in the next conversation, and I limited my comments, thinking there would be another conversation. I'm just wondering if those comments were considered in your deliberation in your last meeting, prior to bringing to the document we're looking at right now.
Yes. Yes.
And can you, can you give me some examples of things that you've kind of considered in the changes?
I think one of your big comments was, "Hey, let's bring Michael Healy back, and let's make sure that we all understand policy governance." I believe the committee was pretty firm in its understanding that we'd had a fair amount of training, and we can always use more, but that we felt we do understand policy governance, and its flexibility, as propounded by Michael Healy. And so we, the committee at least, felt that we believe in these policy changes.
Okay. So the reason why I raised it, because one of the things we haven't had in opportunities, no fault of anyone's here, is to have a real conversation around what the board priorities are. Because setting that big framework, I think, would help in aligning what type of policies you want to steer your superintendent in, right? And so my fear is that we go ahead and make the changes, and then at some point, we have the conversation around, what are the big things we want to do? And we go, "Well, oh, we're actually spending a lot of time on other things that we're not..." So I'm just concerned about us not having that big priority conversation, because we haven't really had the time, and we've been quite busy, and I know a facilitator like that would be able to help us move forward. I don't object to any of the items on here. What I would say is that I think they, they flow from what the board's role is sort of identifying the what to the how. A lot of them are descriptive, sort of telling the superintendent how to do something. And, I mean, at the end of the day, you can do that, but in order to get maximum sort of results, it's usually really identifying the how related to your mission, vision, and priority setting, which we haven't done. So I guess you wouldn't have anything to connect it with, based on just what we've had. So I would encourage the board to kind of think about that, in terms of moving forward, in terms of a structure around that. The other thing I would also say, a number of these items fall into the realm of probably some sort of report or update, and you're asking for, I know you put some timelines in some of these things, but we're on an annual cycle. If you looked at our policy structure, it's an annual cycle, so you wouldn't get that report till the next year. So I mean, these are things I don't think we've had a chance to talk about, you know, how do we remedy that? And I think the conversations would be able to be a little more fruitful, and give you the outcomes that you're desiring, based on some of the content that I've seen in here. The, just in interest of time, the only thing I'm going to sort of point out that I want the board to consider is the recommendation around policy 2.2C, that talks to, superintendent shall not recommend the hiring of permanent or interim building. I believe that the interim piece should be excluded, because there are so many reasons why we place an interim staff, and it is interim. So to have that level of expectations in terms of reporting in a short period of time, sometimes not possible. If you need an interim, something happens, you need an interim tomorrow for something, it's not conceivable for me to come to the board and say. I totally understand in terms of the permanent staff, and the board might go with our recommendation around process for hiring permanent staff, that upon recommendation, there should be these things provided for information. How many people were interviewed, da-da-da-da, whatever. And there's a package that the board receives before they do recommendation. But I do think you need to kind of think about the interim piece, even if there is a timeframe for that, because it does make it logistically challenging to ensure that we have the appropriate people in place when there's urgency or there's time restraints.
Thank you, Superintendent Obang. Commissioner Wick?
Thanks. Superintendent Obang, those were, those were great and thoughtful comments that you just, that you just stated. I'll just briefly respond, because I agree with everything you said with regard to priorities. The board's setting its priorities, and that will help inform everything we do. You're absolutely right, and in one of the policies we have in here, it may be indirect, but it actually says the board must do this. And I know that board members I've spoken with are ready to do this. We are ready to allocate some time to doing this, and it's overdue, as you pointed out. And for whatever reason, it was one thing, as it always is with the board, one crisis after the next, but it's time. So, agreed. And with respect to the reporting cycle for these reports being once a year, well, the committee is taking up the schedule of when we report on various things. We have a pretty good schedule in place from about a year ago, which we have been respecting. So that is on our agenda, to take up the schedule, but it doesn't have to be annually. If you, if you look in our policies, we actually have the discretion as a board, given reasonable advance notice to the superintendent, to ask him to report on any policy at any time. So, but I do like the idea of a schedule, that's predictable, et cetera. So in any event, I agree with that comment as well. And finally, I will absolutely recommend to the Policy and Governance Committee that we take up this, this exception to, we take up a consideration of the exception to the interim hiring document package request that we're requesting here, and we'll take that up in our next meeting, because absolutely there may be emergency circumstances where you need to just do it.
Great.
Just a quick follow-up.
Yes.
Thank you for listening and hearing around those items. The last question I'd have, the, at the last meeting, I think we staff presented a number of mandatory policies to the board, and we have quite a few more, and by legislation, we have to kind of get them up. So I didn't see that on the list, so just wondering if the Policy Governance could give us some timelines when that, we, I held back a few, I was going to bring this time as well, too, because I knew we haven't done this one, but if you could give us an indication when that will be discussed and brought back, so we can continue. We have about maybe thirty of them to bring forward.
I have a quick answer to that. At our next meeting, the Policy and Governance Committee will take up the three reports you provided to us last month, and we'd be delighted to recommend, I suspect, I mean, they were pretty straightforward, recommended by you. We have no objections, is what I'm suspecting, so we'll take it up formally at the next meeting, we'll bring it back to the board next time for its first reading.
Commissioner Barlow.
Thank you. Could we pull policy 2.2C then from this packet? I'm not sure how we're considering these, as a package or individually?
I can speak to that.
Commissioner Wick?
It is as a package, the motion on the table.
So would I have to amend, make an amendment?
You know, parliamentary, parliamentally speaking, you would have to go through the process of making a motion to amend, a second, and then I guess we'll consult, maybe Commissioner Curry remembers, but I could look it up, what it takes to get an amendment added, but I'm not willing to do that. I think we...
So I would like, I, let me, I guess I'll just deliberate some more, and then we can decide if others think it's worth making the motion. I think it is. I hate to reject this entire body of work because of one, one of the policy changes that's being proposed. We've heard the superintendent talk about problems with interim hires, and, and I think that that's worth considering before we codify what you, what you've done here, and make it, you know, something that we have to abide by.
Okay.
So I would say we should pull, pull this, so.
Which? Which?
2.2C.
2.2C.
So point of order.
Yes, Commissioner Fisher.
So the Roberts Rule's, I'm looking at, says amend a motion, requires a second, is debatable, is amendable, and decided by majority vote.
Okay, so I will make a motion to amend the current motion on the table, to, to pull policy 2.2C for further consideration by the Policy and Governance Committee, and to be brought back for further consideration at a future meeting.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Or Commissioner Gorman and Commissioner Curry? All those in favor?
No, no, discussion.
Discussion again. Any discussion? Oh, sorry, Commissioner Gorman.
I think there are, I think there are a number, can you hear me? I think there are a number of points of contention here that are worth considerable discussion, more discussion than I think we should really make time for tonight. I know I have a couple of issues with them, and I think that, you know, following Mark's lead here, we should take it, we should, we should sit down with it and maybe deal with some of these things, like take, you know, the interim objection into consideration and tool the language, and then come back with these and maybe vote on them one by one. Because I know every one of us probably has one or two of these that we're not super happy with, and there are some that we're probably at or near consensus on, and that if we could just, you know, maybe take the feedback we've gotten here, polish it up a little bit, and come back and then vote on them one by one, that way, we don't run into these situations where you have somebody who is inclined to agree with most of the document, but really can't agree to making some part of it binding at the expense of... So that's, that's my suggestion.
Point of order.
Are you suggesting, are you speaking to Commissioner Barlow's motion or something else?
His motion. I'm basically offering some ideas that I think are in support of it, and ways, you know, that we can just deal with things.
Pulling, pulling just that section?
Oh, I thought he meant, I thought he meant to pull the entire thing.
His, his motion was to pull just 2.2C.
Okay. I'm going to suggest that we pull the whole thing, table the, table the whole thing for this meeting, spend some time on it before the next meeting, and then come back and vote on the changes, just one by one.
Parliamentary point of order. You can do that after we finish Commissioner Barlow's motion. You can make a motion, someone could second it, and then we deliberate, and then we vote. But right now, Commissioner Barlow's motion is on the table, and deliberation should only be about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
If you like that idea better, you could pull your...
I did, I did hear... I did hear Commissioner Gorman talk about tabling. I think you can do that in discussion. You did say, you said you wanted to table the discussion and bring it back. I think you can do that.
Okay, so let's look up tabling.
Yeah.
Can I make a comment? I've had my hand up a few times.
Thank you.
And I will be less than two minutes. I just want to say that I actually think focusing on hiring is great, and I appreciate the work that you've done with this. It is an investment that is extremely important to our district. And we have an expert, Nathan Levinson, come and speak to us about the importance of hiring well-qualified, highly qualified, excellent teachers, as that is the best practice nationwide in lowering the achievement gap and narrowing the achievement gap. So, I just want to say thank you for putting light, shedding light on this issue, and I look forward to making some changes.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Bang. Commissioner Fisher.
So, just tabling this matter, you cannot interrupt the speaker. Second is needed, not debatable, not amendable, two-thirds vote.
Wouldn't we just be tabling my motion to amend?
I think you would withdraw your motion to amend.
And then he could table the whole thing, we could vote on it. Or you don't have to.
I would just, my only issue is with 2.2(c) right now.
What's your pleasure, Commissioner Gorman?
Just while board members are sort of deliberating in their own heads, I do like Commissioner Gulick's suggestion around identifying hiring as one of the most important things you can do in any organization. And I would love the opportunity to have a more deeper conversation with the board around what their expectations are and what they feel are the most appropriate steps to get the best qualified candidate. And as I said, once again, we haven't had that opportunity and to just sort of approve something without at least that conversation. So, I would support that sort of line of thinking around maybe identifying something that's most urgent and important, and for us to kind of spend some time doing that and then bring it back to a place where everyone feels comfortable with. So, just to support that comment.
Okay, back to...
Commissioner Gorman.
One minute. So, Commissioner Awol, then Commissioner Gorman.
Well, I just wanted to say, from all of the training that I've had on policy governance, that none of these are set in stone. They can be changed. So, there have been two readings on this. I guess, I'm wondering why all this is coming now in the second reading. Did people not read it the first time around? Because we should have had this discussion last time, the last board meeting, so that those changes could be made. And if it is just 2.2...
(inaudible).
2.2(c), excuse me.
Then if it is only the interim leader, interim building leader that is the verbiage that people are worried about, we can pass it and take it out the next board meeting.
Point of clarification.
One minute.
Point of clarification.
Commissioner Curry.
I just realized why I'm so confused, because the first reading of the next document is 2.2(c). And so, when I wrote my notes, I was like, 2.2(c) is really problematic, because I just realized I'm talking about the next document.
So, when we get to the first...
You have this, items advanced to first reading, and you said in 2.2 Hiring and Treatment Staff, the following language is added to policy titled 2.2(c).
Yeah, the intention was 2.2's, right. So, 2, we'll switch for a moment to answer your question to the first reading materials?
Right.
That should read 2.2(c). My apologies.
That's why I've been so confused.
Yeah, sorry. Just a typo.
All right, so moving on, let us come to...
I think he has a right to force a...
Yeah, you have to address his table.
Commissioner Gorman, yep, after Barlow.
Are you...
What's the question?
Are you moving, if I may, are you moving? Because then we have to vote, and it's two-thirds to win to table this thing. Are you moving, I guess what's on the table right now is that...
I'm really just more throwing it out as a suggestion, and if people are receptive to it, then I will move.
All right, so then, if there's any more discussion on Commissioner Barlow's...
Commissioner Pillsbury.
2(c) is, I personally don't have real issues with 2(c), although I do agree with the interim comment. But I have issues with some of the other ones. And it's going to affect my vote if we move on this right now, whereas I know that we can work on this and come to a happier place for everybody. And, you know, none of these are, there's no real fire to put out here. There's no reason why we shouldn't, you know? Give it some more time and thought, and consider breaking it up and voting on them individually.
Thank you. Commissioner Pillsbury.
I've never been in favor of policy governance, and this is one example. It ties us up in knots. We're a new board, and this policy governance is supposed to be what this board wants to have in how it operates with the superintendent. And you have a committee that's met, I think, three times and seriously talked about this. And I really seriously object to changing the, I accept the interim, but I seriously object to tabling. I think we should move forward. We've been held up by this. This is, policy governance is not helping us move forward, it seems like. It has been a holdup for, every meeting I've been to, I'd like to get this taken care of, so we can move on to do real business of this school district.
Thank you, Commissioner Pillsbury. Then we would like to move, Commissioner Wick. We're done. I'm going to point of order. Everyone has spoken once.
I haven't spoken to this motion.
I think we have. I'm going to...
Not to this motion.
Okay.
So, I just wanted to let Commissioner Awol know that I raised these points about the 2.2(c) being a report at the last meeting. So, I did read it, and I did raise it, and nothing changed, and we have a disagreement. And I believe that this is not an example of policy governance. This is, in fact, an example of confusing the tools of policy governance, because we've had the request and suggestion to use Michael Healy to train us. This board has not had adequate training, and I think the Board of, the School Board of Winuski would certainly significantly disagree that it ties them up in knots. I think this is exactly what we should be doing, is discussing hiring procedures. And I believe we have a failure, because we created a personnel committee, which is not in keeping with policy governance, we have a failure of the board being educated about what our hiring procedures actually are. So, in policy governance, you get that, the whole board learns together, and then the whole board can have an informed discussion. But I think we're tied up in knots, because we bifurcated that, and we lost our true north of policy governance.
Commissioner Gulick.
Liz, you've been on the board for five years. Do you know what the hiring practices are?
They've changed, so I know some of them, but I'm not, you know, familiar, because we had an interim superintendent, a new superintendent, and then we redid, then we went to policy governance. A lot of things changed. And so, I can't tell you that, you know, this past year or the year before that, I know what the procedures are, because my role as a commissioner is not necessarily to know what our systems and procedures are, but to know what our policy goals are and to evaluate whether they are being met.
Thank you, Commissioner Gulick. Commissioner Fisher.
I move previous question. So, I'm moving to Commissioner Barlow's question. That is not debatable and not amendable, and it's a majority vote.
Just point of clarification. So, are we just about to vote on whether to amend my motion to remove item 2.2(c), but otherwise keep the rest of it? I believe that's what we're about to vote on.
We are voting to end the debate.
Oh.
That's all we're voting on.
On that motion.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And how is that done, by a majority?
Majority vote.
Okay.
All right, so all those in favor of moving the question?
I don't know if call the question is debatable, but whatever.
Moving the question is not debatable according to this.
That's right, that's correct. Now, you're correct. We need to vote.
Right, so we're voting on the...
Voting on the motion.
On the motion.
We're voting to end the debate.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, we're ending the debate. We're moving to...
Now, I believe we are going to vote as to whether to amend my motion, which was to accept the whole thing, by removing 2.2(c), which is Commissioner Barlow's proposed amendment.
I'm sorry, but we have to vote on his amendment. Remove 2.2(c).
That's what we're doing.
Okay, but that's not...
His amendment is to remove 2.2(c).
Okay, so can you clarify for me? Then we're still going to go back to...
Then we go back to the main motion, depending on how the outcome of this vote on his amendment goes.
Thank you.
And so, I'd like to call a roll call vote on that, because I think any member has a right to make a roll call vote request.
Can you repeat the motion for the recorder?
Yeah, I think, and Commissioner Barlow can correct me, but the motion is to amend Commissioner Wick's motion to adopt the entirety of the second reading and to amend it in this manner, to remove 2.2(c) from, sorry for using the third person, but Commissioner Wick's motion, but to retain everything else in it. And I think we're now voting.
Great.
Remove 2.2(c) from Commissioner Wick's motion.
Commissioner Pillsbury.
Can't we go by alphabetical order? I always get asked to vote first. But I am voting no.
Commissioner Barlow.
Yes.
Commissioner Wick.
No.
Commissioner Fisher.
Yes.
Commissioner Ivanka.
No.
You're right. Commissioner Carey.
No.
Commissioner Waltz.
Yes.
Commissioner Curry.
Yes.
No.
Commissioner Awol. No. Commissioner Gulick.
No.
Commissioner Gorman.
I'm going to abstain at this time.
So, the noes have it, the amendment doesn't pass.
So, we have...
Six noes.
Six noes and four yeses.
And one abstention.
And one abstention. Okay, so the motion fails.
And so, now we're back to the main motion, which is whether to adopt the second reading materials as a group.
Okay.
Are we still deliberating? I think we've deliberated.
Yeah, we're going to close the voting. So, we're going to vote. Commissioner Curry.
I'd like to make a motion to amend Commissioner Wick's motion and ask that we vote on them one by one.
Do I have a second? Seeing none? We'll go back to the main motion. Okay. Any board discussion? Any board discussion? All right, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions?
No.
No.
What was Commissioner Gorman, you were...
I'm going to abstain.
Abstain. Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioner Wick. Yep, the motion carries, and Commissioner Wick, moving on to...
Okay, so just to be clear, the motion carried, and these are, these are now enacted. Now, we'll move on to first reading, policy changes for, policy changes for first reading. And we'll be brief, I'll just read them. First, we, the Policy and Governance Committee recommends to the full board the consideration and adoption of the following, but not to be adopted tonight, just to be read tonight and deliberated upon. In addition to 2.2 Hiring and Treatment of Staff as following, 2.2(c), so if you were looking at the typo, 2.2(c), make that d like delta. And I'll just read it. The superintendent shall not, number one, hire a permanent or interim building leader, assistant building leader, district senior leader, or district director without involving staff from the building or program, and parents and guardians of students currently in the school or program in the vetting and interviewing process. Two, he shall not fail to gain the best candidates due to lack of timely internal and external publication and posting of the open positions. And three, he shall not fail to appropriately communicate to staff, students, and families on hiring of building leaders and assistant building leaders, both interim and permanent. So, that's the first item. And then let me just do the second item, and then maybe we can take them in turn. The second item is, excuse me, an amendment to 2.1-sub-6. It formally said, or says right now, the superintendent shall not fail to implement restorative practices for addressing social and behavioral issues. The newly proposed language is, the superintendent shall not fail to implement appropriate practices to address social and behavioral issues. Those are first reading items. If I may, with the chair's consent, like I did on the first reading last time, to sort of go through the discussion and deliberation. Does anyone want to discuss or deliberate?
Commissioner Curry.
Thank you. So, I would just say that I think we should be cautious about putting this practice in place without understanding why we're doing it, how to implement it with fidelity, how much it will cost, and how it will impact the HR department. I don't believe this is the kind of practice that large institutions just do at a whim without extensive research and quantification of the impact. I would ask that we take up Commissioner Gulick's suggestion to have someone like Nathan Levinson come and discuss best practices with the district to provide us with the context for how to best design what sounds to me like a distributive leadership model. We need models and examples of other districts that do this, why they implemented it, what the benefits and outcomes are, and how they resolve questions about teacher contracts, paying teachers for their time, training those who participate to minimize implicit bias and comply with the EOC and other hiring laws and regulations. The board is not been educated by the Personnel Committee on what our current hiring practices are now, what our budget is for recruitment and hiring. And so, making a decision that will have a substantial impact like this should be done by a well-informed group of commissioners who can be accountable for that decision. And there's a number of tools, I think, are interesting that do talk about distributive leadership models and research about involving staff and others in hiring practices. So, I'm not opposed to that at all. I think, you know, it would be great to learn about it and have it be done with fidelity and to know what the cost is going to mean for us.
Any other discussions? Any commissioners? Thank you, Commissioner Curry. Commissioner Wick.
Okay, so I guess we'll close the first reading on these items and refer it back to committee before we take it to a second reading.
Commissioner, Superintendent O'Bang.
Yeah, just so for committee consideration, I would, once again, 2.2, section one, I would ask committee to consider removing the interim piece for the same rationale I gave with the previous policy. And also, 2.216, restorative practices was initially put in there specifically because it is one of our board and district goals. So, just questioning why we'd want to remove that language, because you could be inclusive in that, restorative practice, and other appropriate actions or whatever, but to remove that, I think, would send a significant message in terms of one of our major goal areas. So, just for committee to think about that.
Thank you, Superintendent O'Bang. Commissioner Pillsbury.
No, so I was just going to move to just vote, we're not voting on this, just going to discuss it and then come back.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Curry.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak before I speak again?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was kind of separating the first reading, so I was speaking to the first one, the second one. I'm confused about why this is being considered, what the goal is. And we have invested over, well over a million dollars, I think, maybe not that much, in restorative practices. It's been in the budget almost three years in a row, and it is a key strategy for addressing climate and culture. And I'm concerned that, actually, that we're putting in a policy about social and behavioral issues at all. And the word appropriate, again, the appropriateness test is highly subjective, so you could have a superintendent make the case that inappropriate practice is to have SRO come in with a dog to search students' backpacks. And that is a technique we have seen in the past that, you know, was a grave concern to the school board and the students, and, you know, had a significantly negative impact on the climate. So, that is an example of a practice that a superintendent can be said is appropriate, and you can't really fix that after the fact. and you can't really fix that after the fact, that's kind of an example of a way that school-to-prison pipeline happens for students of color. So, in addition to my opposing this whole section, I would offer a language in the event that I'm in the minority that says, fail to implement practices for addressing to, addressing to address. So, addressing social behavior issues, provided these practices are free from implicit bias, racial prejudice, and discrimination when applied to students of color, female students, students from families with low income, students with special education needs, and English language learners, and students with disabilities, so that we are very explicit in our concern for students.
Yeah. Thank you. Commissioner Fisher.
So, a couple things, I'll put the clock on myself. Commissioner Curry, you had some concerns about adding language around addressing social behavioral issues. That language is already in the policy?
Yeah, I was...
We are...
Where is that? I'm sorry.
2.1 sub six.
Right, and so what, what the proposal is, is to amend that language, and you are correct, Superintendent O'Bang, it is removing the word restorative practices. One topic of discussion came up is around other methodologies and frameworks like PBIS. And so, I think the goal of this proposed amendment is to say that those practices are okay, that it's not just the restorative practices.
PBIS is a restorative practice. We're not talking about restorative justice, we're talking about restorative practices.
Thank you.
That's why we need the conversations, we need the conversations.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. All right, Commissioner Wick.
No, I'm good.
Okay, moving on. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Chair Wal. We'll close this first reading item.
Great. Next is the New Voices Law Ad hoc Committee. Commissioner Wick, thank you for your work on this, and I'll lead you into item A.
Oh, thanks very much. I don't know, Bonnie, if you got my notice of thanks there. I wanted to say thank you, well, first to the board for creating this ad hoc committee last meeting, and we promised to get this done within 60 days. We put together, I was very incredibly impressed with the folks on the ad hoc student, I'm sorry, on our New Voices Policy Committee, and I, well, we listed all their names, but I'll say a personal thank you to everyone right now, because these were stakeholders. We have Mike Donahue of the Vermont Press Association and the New England, boy, I'm getting tired, I can tell, the New England, New England First Amendment Coalition, so Mike Donahue served on it, Professor Tracy Griffith, Griffith, a journalism professor at St. Michael's College, served on the committee. We have Teacher Beth Fialko Casey, who's the media advisor to the register, and we have Principal Noel Green, who served on it, and myself, and then most importantly, perhaps, we have the four co-editors of the BHS Register who served on it, and who am I forgetting? I don't think I'm forgetting anyone. I think that was the group, and we had a couple of meetings, and we had some lively debate and discussion, and, and boy, the press was there, it was interesting. But we, we all unanimously agreed on the policy that was posted to Board Docs at Agenda Item 12, if my numbering is correct, I apologize, yep. So, I would make the motion, so the, the group unanimously approved for recommendation to the full board, and therefore tonight, all we can do is a first reading. And I assume you've all read it, because you all had an opportunity to see it in advance, and so what I'd like to do, well, actually, we're not even voting on it, so I don't even have to make a motion on it. We're just putting it out there to the world, so that next time we get together, well, we can deliberate on it, but the next time we get together, we will actually vote upon it. Does anyone want to speak to it? Have any questions about it? Everyone's read it, okay? It's up there on Board Docs.
Commissioner Fisher.
So, just, thank you, Chair. The paragraph around the prior review, which I know is a big subject, and then it has second sentences, rather is the belief and expectation that a media advisor is suitably qualified. I would like to see a little more precise language, right? Is it, is it the, is it a role? A media advisor, right?
It's a defined term in the statute.
Right, so is that person going to have any role in reviewing the media, or is that a general appropriate guidance in advance of publishing media? Do you understand my point?
Yeah, I think I understand your question, and I'd be delighted to speak to it.
I, I think I understand the intent, I'm just looking for a little more precise language to make it clear, there is, the media advisor is not doing prior, was it called, prior review?
The media advisor is defined as, and just how we use the media advisor, it's, in our case, it's Beth Fialko, who is the media advisor, that's defined as, a person employed, appointed, or designated by the school district to supervise or provide instruction relating to school-sponsored media. So, that's the person in charge. In our schools, in our, in BHS, it's a licensed teacher, and we actually debated as to whether, in other schools, it may not be, it could be an administrator, it could be someone else. So, the media advisor will work on educating the students, and it's, it's not his or her job, well, indirectly it is, if the education is there, working with the students to help ensure that the, the prohibited content is not published, but the law actually provides, and I'm going to find it, I'll paraphrase it first, and then we can find it. The actual law says that it's the job of the student supervisor to determine the content of school-sponsored media, and the student supervisor is also a defined term that actually means, for example, in our situation, the co-editors of the register. It's confusing, student supervisor sounds like somebody who supervises students like a teacher, but actually, the law means that to be the co-editors or whoever's in charge at a student level. So, what the law says is the student supervisor who determines the content, and then it is our, our hope and belief that the media advisor, that's the teacher in the room, the adult in the room, so to speak, is the one who is properly informing the student journalists. But ultimately, where the committee came down, and which we believe the law fully supports, is that there is no prior review by the principal or the district of, of, of media that gets published. But if it's, once published, if it's determined to violate one through six, or any one of one through six, then it can be taken down.
So, I'll, then I'll ask a clarifying question. Will the media advisor perform prior review?
Will the media, no, in that sense. The media advisor will provide advice and consultation and good guidance, and certainly, I guess, let's, no and yes, it's, it's a soft yes, probably. In other words...
Then the language is accurate, because to me, I think it, it is a soft, I would like it, if there's no prior review, let's say there's no prior review by any staff member, and let's say that the media advisor is providing general guidance overall, but not specific prior review to content.
That's the idea.
Because I think that's a really, then I think it needs to be specifically stated.
I, I think it is, I mean, you, you could say we need to take it back to committee and work on it, but if we just read it for a second, because we did spend a fair amount of time on it, there shall be no prior review by the district or building administrator of school-sponsored media published in conformance with the New Voices Law. Rather, it is the belief and expectation that a media advisor is suitably qualified to provide appropriate guidance to student journalists. In other words, the discussion in the committee was, listen, we don't need necessarily an administrator being the censor, you know, as in the Chinese government must look at everything before it gets published in certain circumstances, that's not the American way, that's not the First Amendment. And so, we were suggesting, and we believed, that the media advisor, the teacher in the room, is, is suitably qualified to direct the, not direct the students, but what did we say? Provide appropriate guidance, so that the possibility of putting out verboten content is minimized. But the safety valve is, if it goes out, and it turns out to, to violate one, two, three, four, five, or six, then it comes down. And, and I will admit, we then got into a little bit of a discussion about how detail-oriented do we want to be about who makes the call about the takedown? What's the procedure? And that's where we kind of said, policy, procedure, huh? Well, you know what? The policy is this, but the procedure may be beyond our scope. So, we stopped where we thought procedure, and we, we figured we would have an internal discussion with the administration and the board's counsel about what's the right process when a principal thinks that something is violative of the law to get it taken down.
Can you also expand to the board, just the template that exists?
Oh, oh, yes, super important. We didn't make this, most of this, we didn't make it up. Thankfully, much of our work had been done by us, by the Vermont School Boards Association and presumably their attorney. We used their template, and we modified it lightly, which, by the way, is the same or similar thing that the South Burlington School District recently did as well. They used the Vermont School Boards Association template, and they modified it as they saw fit fairly lightly as well. So, we, we didn't just make this up.
Superintendent O'Bang.
Thank you, first of all, for doing this work, and I think administrators will receive this well, because it looks like it takes them out of the, the sort of the censorship opportunities, but that also brings up, because you talked about the role of the media advisor, did you have a conversation in your group, who's responsible for liability? Because you're talking about removing something after the fact, I mean, once it's out there, if someone says they're agreeing, who's the person that previously would be the administrator of the school now, so did you have a conversation around that, who?
We did, and we believe that the, the First Amendment and the New Voices Law provides this situation, and it inherently is a, a level of risk. In other words, we as a society have, have decided, by agreeing on the First Amendment and in Vermont, by agreeing on the New Voices Law, that, that this is the way we've balanced it, that there is a risk, that something goes out that is going to subject us to liability, but that there's a...
There are six areas that you've mentioned there, so I'm just, just so I can give direction to our staff, who is responsible for the liability at the end of the day?
It's not the media advisor, and it's not the, it's, in other words, everyone's doing their best here, hoping we are well-training our media advisor, and the media advisor's well-training the students, but because of the risk of the First Amendment, freedom of speech, there is the possibility that something eventually might get out that is going to have to be taken down. I'm not sure, I think we should have a discussion with our attorney.
Yeah, I think it's something we should kind of talk with our legal around, because is it the student who puts it forward that's liable, or is it the media advisor, or is it the administrator that does it after the fact that says this is inappropriate? Because I think, I would feel more comfortable giving direction to our staff, because that's a question I'll get, like, okay, who's responsible for this?
So, agreed, but we can't change the law, and our policy only can carry out the law, and we as a committee believed we were carrying out the law, and so, in any event, even if we don't like it, that there is still a risk, that's, that was the point of the New Voices Law, to provide the same protections, or virtually the same, to student journalists as are provided to the press in general.
Yeah, no, I'm not asking to change, I'm saying support it, but in order to support it, because if there is a risk of liability we can identify, then we can, we can be proactive in terms of our insurance...
Yep, let's figure out.
...around who should be, I just wonder if you had a conversation on that, that way we can be specific around, okay, who do we need to make sure that we've got the liability around, just in case something happens, and that person is protected under...
We absolutely think that that sort of falls into the category of procedure and advice of counsel for how to mitigate the risk that the law creates. The law creates that risk, and we need to figure out how to mitigate it as a school district, I agree. And so, let's have that conversation with, with our attorneys and administrators and come up with a, a procedure on, on, on that.
Yeah, you have great voice.
Commissioner Waltz.
I want to add, all of these things that are not protected are the kind of things that if, if a student did, it would be addressed, because it probably would be considered harassment, it would have to be investigated. If you use the student paper to bully somebody, it's still considered bullying, correct? This list, all of these, everything on this list are things that they would have to face some kind of either restorative process or...
Yeah, no, I understand, I'm talking about the liability aspect, because currently, if something happens, we often get this suit that goes to the supervisor who's in charge, the school, and then the district, and then sometimes the board, right? So, in this instance, if these individuals have no responsibility in terms of that piece of content, then I need to be able to, at some point, at least, talk with our insurers and say, okay, this is the possibility, and we have to ensure that these individuals who are working with these students are going to be the ones that may be exposed, and I'm just, I hope we have some legal counsel conversations to give us some direction around what we can do to protect our staff in the event, hopefully nothing ever happens, but in the event that something does happen, where do we go?
Is this not the same thing as the press, the regular press, not being able to be gone after because they have freedom of the press? So, I'm, I'm kind of thinking that if this is the First Amendment, it's, it's the same thing, so you wouldn't be leaving yourself open, because it is the freedom of the press, whether it's kids' press or...
If I may, just, if I may here, in the interest of time, the superintendent brings up a good point, which is risk mitigation given the New Voices Law. So, we need to have a conversation with our carrier, our insurance carrier, and our attorney, and we'll sort out what is the best way to mitigate the risk of a lawsuit against the district for something that goes out that's violative of one through six.
And there are six areas, Kathy, that are not protected.
But, but that's all true, and we can work on that, but that, so...
All right, I would like to move on.
Can I just ask?
Commissioner Curry.
Just honest question, what I don't understand is, if a student prints something that's confidential, because they came by that information somehow, which one of these six does that fall under?
So, I would, Commissioner Curry, what I would say is, the intent of the New Voices Law was...
I know the intent.
No, but it was to give student journalists the same protection that journalists out there in the world have, and so the answer to the question you posed is the same as if you were going to say, if the New York Times came upon something confidential, or a confidential source, et cetera, et cetera, and they published based on it, I think you're saying, do they have a right to? And the answer may be yes, but I'm not prepared to answer that, that's a legal question.
So, that's why I'm raising it, because I don't know if this is on Jeff, but that's why I'm raising it, because I think we should know that if, you know, what, how to handle that situation, if it doesn't meet the criteria of any of these six things, but confidential information gets printed in the paper, the New York Times is privately owned, we are a public institution, a public body, so, you know, I guess, it's like, what if a state employee put confirmation, confidential information on the state website?
So, you raise a great, great question, again, could we be subject to a lawsuit because a student did what a journalist has a right to do?
Or just, what's the implications? I just don't understand the implications, not, not even about getting sued, just, what is that, where does that live?
So, just to be clear, though, there are a lot of great questions and hard questions that surround freedom of the press, especially at the student level, because it seems a little different, but the fact is, this policy is intended merely to stay within the confines of the New Voices Law.
I get that, and, and the statute doesn't address confidentiality either, but what I'm requesting is that we ask the VSB, the questions about liability and confidentiality, and what their recommendation would be for school districts, because I would imagine it applies to every, those issues come up for everybody.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Great question.
All right.
Can you add to your list when you're inquiring, who makes a determination on the six, right? Who determines something is, right?
Well, that's clearly stated in here, it says, district staff may restrain the distribution of content that can be demonstrated to violate any of those conditions. We didn't make that language up, that's from VSB's resolution, which is taken right from the law. So, in other words, if something gets out there, published by the register, for example, and the principal, or you, or any of us, say, oh my God... and the principal, or you, or any of us say, "Oh, my God." So then, if it can be demonstrated, quote, "can be demonstrated to violate one through six," then it may be restrained. So the procedural question that we still need to work on as a district is, what is that process if somebody, one of us, one of you, one of the, determines that, "Oh, my gosh, that looks like it violates it." So we need to have that conversation. But that's what the law provides, so we can't do anything about it-
Great.
-tonight.
Let's move on. Thank you. We will move- Thank you, Commissioner Wick, for your work, and for all those associated that volunteered their hours to create Burlington School District's policy on student freedom of expression in school-sponsored media. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the resolution on elementary school staffing. We'll have Board Officer Fisher.
So I'm going to read the resolution. "We respect the Burlington School District's systems leader resource allocation process and acknowledge the intense and thoughtful work to system alignment. The Board is reluctant to give specific direction and understand that staffing allocation is an operational function designated to staff. After careful review, analysis, and considering that the budgeting and allocation process for this school year is completed, the Board has identified two schools that require immediate support outside the budget process, Flynn Elementary School and Sustainability Academy. Whereas the Board recommends that the superintendent review and affirm the needs at these schools, and whereas the Board is a duly-elected representative of the citizen taxpayers who bear financial burden of the school system, gives authority to the superintendent to make the 2.0 full-time equivalent allocation even if it exceeds the budgeted allocation for teachers. And whereas these allocations to Flynn, 1.0 FTE teaching and/or special educator position, and SA, 1.0 FTE teaching and/or special educator, elementary school, shall be limited for the remainder of the 2018-2019 school year, and whereas no other positions shall be eliminated to implement this action. This resolution gives support, authority, and direction to the superintendent to allocate the above-mentioned 2.0 full-time equivalent in additional elementary staffing for FY18 and 19."
I'll second that.
So I'm sorry, I just want to clarify. I did not move, I just read it.
Oh.
Sorry.
I'd move to be adopted.
I'll second.
Commissioner Curry, Commissioner Wick, any discussion? Commissioner Barlow.
So am I to understand that we need this resolution, because without it, the superintendent might be in violation of policy 2.3.1 that prevents him from expending more funds than have been budgeted? Is that, is that the, why we need this resolution?
Commissioner Wick.
Can I speak to that? So, expending more funds that have been budgeted, I think that goes to the aggregate. In other words, let's say we've generated a million dollars in surplus over the last three years. If we, what that resolution says is that we're acknowledging that he may be going over the line item, if you will, budgeted for teachers, but I don't think we believe that by doing this, it's going to put us in a deficit situation. So I don't actually think we're, we'd be violating that rule, but it does depend on an unknown, which is whether or not we've got this surplus-y situation.
So then, just a clarifying question, why do we need a resolution, then, to help the superintendent with staffing decisions?
I would love to answer that, but I don't want to take up all the air in the room.
I neither.
Anyone want to answer that?
Sure.
Mr. Curry.
I'll answer that casually right now, and that is that, you know, we've heard testimony tonight, we heard testimony in April from our stakeholders in these two schools, and there was an ongoing process to fulfill the needs that were expressed, and that process never materialized. Well, the process materialized, but the results never materialized. And so what we have right now are two situations that are extremely difficult to manage in the schools, more so than perhaps any other school. I'm not saying that this is a systems solution. It's really a Band-Aid for a system that needs further attention, but it's something that we can do to meet the needs of these kids in these two schools right now, and that we should do it. If that makes sense.
May I just respond?
Yes, Commissioner Barlow.
So my understanding is the superintendent's prepared to make these allocations, so he doesn't need a resolution from us. Is that, is that correct?
Superintendent Obang.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I, I, I am in support of the resolution specifically around the area around exceeding the budget if necessary, because I am concerned about eight months from now, six months from now, when we're doing a different budget exercise, and people see an overture in a certain area and say, "Why did that happen?" I want to be able to go back and say, "Hey, the Board gave me permission to overspend in that, in this particular area."
Thank you, Superintendent Obang. Commissioner Curry.
Yeah, so while I don't support this practice at all, I understand that the outcomes that occurred as a result of our budgeting process created really difficult situations, and in, in SA, I don't agree with all the data that's been presented in terms of staff allocations, but what it does raise for me is two things. Number one, I believe, maybe Director Lavery could speak to this, I believe we have a policy or a requirement that the administration cannot exceed any one line item by $10,000. Is that right? Can you correct me if, what it actually is?
No, we have, no, we have, I think the guidance there is about whether or not we're doing unbudgeted transfers, if I remember correctly. I'd have to look.
Budgeted transfers?
Unbudgeted.
Unbudgeted transfers. So would this be an unbudgeted transfer?
No, we would have to, I mean, the idea is we would look at, we would find, we would have to find a way to identify funds to transfer into the wage and benefits portions of the budget in order to fund it.
So in that sense, it would be an unbudgeted-
That isn't, yeah, we follow up, because if you look at the budget presentation from last year, we had, I forget the number, number of students equated to how many teachers and how many dollars we would spend, so we budgeted for that. So we would be exceeding that amount.
Yeah.
So, so it would be unbudgeted. So that's why I reinforced-
We need a resolution.
-that I, if the Board is directing me to do this, and I know our staff would welcome any additional supports, that I do want something that I can refer to down the road and say, "Yes, remember, the Board said, 'Go ahead and do this, even if it goes over the expenditure.'" So just to be clear.
Thank you, Superintendent Obang.
So I would offer an amendment, well, I'd offer two amendments, actually. One is that we, whereas the Board authorizes the administration to make an unbudgeted transfer of over $10,000 to implement this directive and, or this action. And then the other thing, the overall policy issue this says to me is that I believe our equity index formula should be revised to help prevent this from happening in the future. I think we came up with an equity formula that's been in practice for two or three budget years, and it was a very basic equity formula, and I think now we have the experience, this is a classic example of policy governance, we have the experience that we tried a system, and it evolved to the point where we now see its limitations, and it's an opportunity to add criteria to the equity formula that would address these kinds of conditions in a more targeted way, so that it's available to the whole district. So this particular practice is, to me, very arbitrary, but if we could modify the equity index, I guess I'd ask the administration or make a motion, whereas the administration shall convene a group of staff who are willing to volunteer their time and administrators to revise the equity index formula to prevent unbudgeted transfers of over $10,000 for staffing in the future.
Thank you, Commissioner Curry. Commissioner Wick.
Oh, just, I think Commissioner Curry, though, just made a motion to amend the motion on the table, and therefore we have to go through the, actually, she needs a second, and if she gets a second, then we go through the discussion, and then we vote on the amendment request.
Great. I second it.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Walz.
Now we're discussing the secondary motion.
Yes, Commissioner Barlow.
Thank you. So I, I think that, I think to clarify that the, the primary intent of this is to, is to provide the superintendent with the authority because of the unbudgeted transfers is a good one, because that way, it's not, it doesn't look to be a resolution that is overriding the superintendent's authority to, to make staffing decisions in the district. So I, I support some, some language. I'm not completely clear on Commissioner Curry's language for this, though. Could you, could you repeat that, please, for me?
Sure. Both clauses, both whereses?
Sure. Yes, please.
Okay, so Nathan just pointed to the policy that we are asking the superintendent to override, which is 2.3.8, and so that would be, whereas the Board authorizes the administration to make a single unbudgeted purchase or commitment of greater than $25,000. So that's the first one. And then the second one is, whereas the administration shall convene a group of staff who are willing to volunteer their time and administrators to revise the equity index formula, is that what it's called? Equity allocation, equity index formula? To prevent unbudgeted, to prevent the district from being out of compliance with its policies in the future.
Thank you, Commissioner Curry. Thank you.
I can email it to everybody.
Thank you. Commissioner Wick.
Yep. So I think this falls under, we're deliberating the motion to amend the motion. I will say that directionally, I agree with Commissioner Curry's words. The first one was, no, the second one was amending the equity index, which I think is, is nice, and we should absolutely look into it, but I don't know that it needs to be, I personally, speaking for myself, don't believe we need to add it to this motion. I think it's important, but I think it complicates the motion. I think we're trying to get something done very clean here. And so getting to the first thing, which is some extra language that, that says something to the effect of allowing an illegal transfer of funds of $10,000 or more, or something like that, I don't think that's necessary language either, because the language in there already authorizes the superintendent to do what we're intending him to do. So in other words, I think it's, it's, it's unnecessary to add the extra language, because the language as it stands already encompasses the intent very, very clearly, and so I don't think it's necessary. I think it's just not necessary to add it, and it gets us, gets the job done just the same.
Thank you, Commissioner Wick. Any other commissioners? I think I'm going to move to-
You asked, do I have to call the question, or are we done discussing?
I think we're done with discussion. Commissioner Curry, last.
Well, the, the authorization is to give the superintendent permission to be out of compliance with the policies. The resolution itself doesn't do that, it just leaves him exposed-
I don't think it does.
...to violating our policies.
It doesn't. I don't think it does. I think, sorry, if I, if I may, I, I don't believe it does. I believe expressly authorizing him to make an unbudgeted expenditure for this purpose is, is proving it very clearly.
I have one up here, too. Thank you. Commissioner Pillsbury.
I think we're getting all hung up again. We have children in, in real need in the primary schools, two primary schools. We're talking about narrowing the achievement gap. We, it doesn't take, we don't have to have an equity index to know that children who are in need, need services. And to me, what we found is that we, we had three positions, we went, we gave, we allocated one to IEA for a dance, dance teacher, we allocated one to Edmunds, because we needed more kindergarten teachers, and we allocated one position to the high school because of, I'm not sure, allocation of people. But at the same time, we have children in, who are challenged, who need help, and if we're talking about moving them through our system, this is the time to help them.
Thank you, Commissioner Pillsbury.
This is the time to do that. And you're cutting me off, and I don't get to speak much. I'm sorry. But I, this is a whole issue, it's not an issue about equity index. Let's talk about kids. This is about all the children in need, and I think that's where we need to focus, that we have some, we have some very dire situations, we heard the word crisis tonight, and two of our schools, and we need to say, "Yes, we're there for you." We're the, our, our people want to know that their high education taxes are going to serve the children, making sure that they get the help that they need. And this other talk about authorization and equity index, let's just do the right thing.
Thank you, Commissioner Pillsbury. Sorry for cutting you. Commissioner Barlow.
Just to remind us, with all due respect to Commissioner Pillsbury, that we do have policy now that prevents us from overspending our budget. So if we have-
But you're on with policy governance.
If we have extraneous needs, we have needs that were unanticipated, we have to make, we have to accommodate them in a way that gives authority to the superintendent to violate the policy. So I do, I do support language in this resolution that expressly states that.
All right. I think we will vote on the resolution.
On the amendment.
On the amendment. Excuse me. Sorry.
I'd like to call a roll call, just so it's clear, because it could be, no?
Well, this takes up time. It's either going to be up or down.
Forget roll call, I withdraw that.
Commissioner Wick.
Thank you.
What is the amendment?
I know, that's-
I just emailed it to everybody.
Thanks.
So I'll, I'll read it.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher.
I'll read it. The amendment adds to, two clauses. First one, whereas the Board authorizes the administration to make a single unbudgeted purchase or commitment of greater than $25,000. Whereas the administration shall convene a staff, a group of staff who are willing to volunteer their time and administrators to revise the equity index formula to prevent the district from being out of compliance with its policies in the future.
No. Oh, I'm sorry. Have board members on there, too?
Those are just additions, right?
These are, this is proposed, two additions to the motion.
Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion that was just read by Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Okay, the motion fails. Thanks.
But, do we know that?
I counted-
I thought he was going to do roll call.
They were louder, for sure.
It's failed. I don't think anyone's going to-
Want to roll call, Commissioner Curry, or not? No. Okay, we're back to the original.
I moved the question.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Pillsbury. Commissioner Fisher.
I'd like to, before we vote on the motion, I'd like to, is that right? If I-
It's not for discussion.
I'm sorry?
Move the question.
Excuse me, Commissioner Pillsbury.
Not a lot of discussion.
You are moving, for, for moving question?
Yes. Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Pillsbury.
Where, where's Commissioner gentleman to support me?
Yes.
Happens to all of us.
Is there any discussion on move the question? I don't think so. It's just an up or down majority?
Yeah. So at this time, we will vote on the resolution, the elementary school?
No, no, I think, I think-
Vote to close discussion.
Move the call, we'd vote on whether to close discussion or not.
Right. He moved the question, so.
All right. So all those in favor of moving the discussion, voting on closing the discussion, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Aye.
Oh, I think it closes.
Four, still the majority. Go ahead, Commissioner Fisher.
Can I ask for a roll call?
Yeah.
Sure. Commissioner Gorman.
Nay.
Commissioner Golick.
Yes.
One minute.
Hold on, so it's out.
Commissioner Orwell.
Yes.
Commissioner Curry.
Nay.
Commissioner Walz.
Yes.
Commissioner Carey.
Yes.
Commissioner Ivanchuk.
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher.
No.
Commissioner Wick.
Abstain.
Commissioner Barlow.
No.
Commissioner Pillsbury.
Yes.
Okay, we have six in favor of yes, four no's, and one abstention. So we close discussion, and we move to a vote on the resolution. All right. So-
So voting on the resolution as, as proposed up there on the-
Great. So voting on the resolution proposed, on item number, where are we now? Sorry.
The old 14.
Old 14. Thank you. All right, all those in favor of the elementary school staffing resolution? We'll do a roll call. Okay, Commissioner Gorman.
Aye.
Yeah. Yes. Commissioner Gulick?
Yes.
Commissioner Orwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Curry?
Uh, aye.
I'm sorry?
Aye.
Yes. Sorry, Commissioner Walz?
Yes.
Commissioner Carey? Commissioner Ivanchik?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
No.
Commissioner Wick?
Yes.
Commissioner Barlow?
Yes.
Commissioner Pillsbury?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Ten commissioners, yes, one no. Thank you. Then the resolution is passed. Thank you, commissioners, for the lively discussion and... Next on the agenda, we move to committee, actually, yep, committee reports. Starting with policy governance, Commissioner Wick?
I, I don't have anything further to report tonight, but we've had good committee meetings a couple of months. Thank you.
Community engagement, uh, committee report. Mike, do you want me to speak to it?
Yeah, why don't you do that, please?
Okay, um, so we met at Hunt Middle School, uh, two weeks ago and... Yep. We had a, we only had one attendee, but we had some good discussions. Um, I'm gonna be co-chairing the early ed task force with Kathy Orwell, and we have a meeting tomorrow night at six o'clock at Ira. And we would love you to attend the next, uh, community engagement committee, which will be on November twenty ninth, six to eight at Hunt Middle. Thank you, Commissioner Gulick. Next on the committee reports, curriculum and personnel.
Well, we met, uh, two weeks ago, um, with, um, some teachers from Burlington High School to talk about the personalized learning plans, proficiency-based learning, and flexible pathways. The Minutes didn't make the posting, but they're being passed around. It's a two-page document. We, La, found us some very interesting information from these, uh, teachers about what needs to be funded as we move forward in terms of transformation of, uh, teaching practices at specifically Burlington High School.
Thank you, Commissioner Carey. Next on the agenda is the super... Oh, sorry, non-D and E was added, my fault. Commissioner Curry and Commissioner Ivanek.
Um, I just had questions about Minutes, policy governance meetings, October fourth and eighteenth. Were those canceled?
Are we missing some minutes online? I'll check into that.
The eighteenth was canceled. It coincided with, uh, something else.
It was a budget presentation to the community, so we canceled that one meeting.
So it's just October fourth?
Are we still missing some meeting, uh, meeting minutes online, even if?
They were not on the October ninth school meeting, and I know we're missing the D and E meeting minutes from October.
I'll check into my committees missing minutes.
Somebody could track that, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Curry. Um, an update on the D and I committee. Commissioner Ivanek?
Um, so we met on October sixteenth, um, and we discussed, uh, the first forty-five minutes of our meeting. We discussed the incident that happened at Hunt. And we got the story from Henry Sparks, Director of Equity and Safety in Exclusive Schools. He's been working extensively with the students at the school to address this, um, incident. And it's something that needs to be discussed at large within the district and within the community. So we're making some, uh, headway into that at, um, at the school that my daughter attends, IEA. Um, and then the other stuff that came up at the meeting, I might let Liz chime in on that. But we're looking forward to looking, uh, to looking at the equity inclusion report and diving into it more at our future meeting. Um, and then another issue that come up, came up was the naming of the committee. So since I've been on the board, we've been referring it to diversity, equity, and inclusion. However, Liz Curry says that it's just diversity and equity. I went, and that they never voted to include inclusion. And so, um, I just went back to some previous meeting minutes and noticed that, starting January of this school, of this year, two thousand eighteen, they did add inclusion to the title of, um, the committee. So I would like clarification on the naming of this committee.
Thank you, Commissioner Ivanek. Commissioner, Commissioner Orwell?
Having been part of that, I remember that Stephanie Seguino, at some point, someone brought that up. Why is, why are you not putting inclusion? It was originally when the Office of Civil Rights started this, that it was in the name. And Stephanie then just thought, said, okay, as of now, we will be with inclusion at the end of the name.
Thank you for sharing that, Commissioner Orwell.
And that's when it was started again. But it was originally in the name.
Thank you, Commissioner Orwell, for sharing that. Commissioner Curry?
Um, thanks. So, um, I, the name, to me, is kind of like immaterial. I think I just made the statement at the meeting that I wasn't aware it was that. I wasn't aware the board ever voted on it. I'm not, I don't have a problem with it, but, I mean, I'm standing corrected, it is not a problem. I think it's kind of a, just a trivial thing. I think it's a great name. And I apologize for calling it the wrong thing. But I think this is a good chance to, um, actually inform the board about what's been going on in relation to the events at the Hunt Dance, if people, um, are interested and we have the time.
I think in the interest of time, and we have switched the agenda around for district leaders, um, to have waited for their time. I apologize because it is something we want to discuss, but if we could put it, um, on next month's.
Sure.
But I know that Superintendent O'Bang has been patiently waiting with his staff here, so.
Sure.
Okay. Next, uh, so that is, that wraps our committee reports. Um, next will be the superintendent report.
Finally. Thank you, Chair Will. Uh, I do want to start off by thanking, uh, the community and all the volunteers that helped, uh, bring the BHS re-envisioning to reality. I think it was a great moment for Burlington community and for our staff and, and for our students and future students. But I do want to single out, um, Marty Spalding, our Director of Property Services. I know we've thanked a lot of people, but I'll tell you, from three years ago, when, uh, we were having conversations, Marty has done a lot, significant work behind the scenes. Bringing that project down from over a hundred thousand to what we were able to present in all the other conversations that we've had. And he's been steadfast in staying forward and trying to deliver. So I am pleased for the community, but I'm also pleased that Marty's work has paid dividends and, uh, now he's rewarded by more work as we move forward to the next steps in, uh, in doing this. Uh, I'm gonna move quickly on, um, because I do want to recognize, we've got a number of our system leaders here tonight and, um, wanted to recognize there, I know we're losing some of them because, uh, some of them have other family responsibilities. But I do want them to stand up, all our systems leaders, just to, so the board can see, uh, the representation we have here tonight. And, you can sit down now. One reason I wanted to acknowledge them here, 'cause often we, you know, we talk about our staff and our sort of classroom staff, but we seldom ever give recognition to administrators who do a lot, significant work supporting the staff in the schools that support our teachers. And so I know that, uh, they seldom get that, that opportunity, so I wanted to do a public acknowledgement. I also wanted to let you know that, uh, behind the scenes, through our budget process and our allocations, that, uh, these individuals do the hard work in terms of gathering information, working together, and making tough decisions with limited resources over the last few years. And they've, uh, continued to do that. But the most thing that I'm most proud of, they've been supportive of their colleagues in terms of, uh, understanding the needs of other schools. So when you see presentations that, uh, come here with recommendations, it's not in isolation. It's not from my office solely. It's from our group's analysis. And then finally threw up, and Chair Will had an opportunity, I think it was last week, it was last week, time flies, to, uh, to visit one of our sessions and to see the great etidological conversations that happen, um, in those sessions before. So, thank you. And we've got a few that are gonna, uh, share the presentation today, so, but I wanted to, uh, sort of, uh, acknowledge the entire group, and I know they've been patiently waiting tonight, so thank you for that. And I'll ask, uh, our executive director, Nathan Labrie, to, uh, to come forward. And Bonnie, if you could put up our budget, um, slides? You have?
Okay, hold on.
You gotta keep going.
Go up to the top, to the first slide, and then hit present.
I know I saw them somewhere.
It's gonna be up behind the other one.
Earlier. The graphs, Nathan's graphs, money, money information. I know I saw it somewhere. You know what number? Yeah.
Just click on the beginning.
The first slide's important to the mission slide. It gets over the second slide, it's like...
I know, I saw them. I was looking at them. Oh, maybe not.
Bonnie, go up to the first slide, so up.
Oh, here it is. At the top, it's four, number four. Number four. I think. Yeah, it's number four.
Now hit present.
Oh, it's, um, approval of consent agenda.
All right, Raffin, what do you have?
All right, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So we're here tonight to provide an update on the budget development process. Uh, I'm gonna talk, uh, give a little bit of an intro, um, and some, uh, general themes from some of our community consultations. Then I'm gonna turn it over for, uh, some discussion, as Yao mentioned, from our couple of representatives of our, our system leaders to talk about the process that's currently undergoing. And then we're gonna talk in a little more detail about some specific items that are gonna, um, that you're gonna have to make decisions about. So with that said, um, the next slide is, uh, just kind of, whoop, that's two. Slow down there, Yao. Uh, back, back one slide, please. Okay. So I just wanted to put up the slide that speaks to the Burlington School District's mission as a bit of a touchstone, because I think it's important, um, whenever we kind of really start to dive into the budget conversations, to keep in mind the mission that the district's, um, pursuing. And to consider the questions, the budget questions before you, in light of our stated mission, and consider the degree to which, um, the proposals move us in the direction of our mission. And as you'll see later, we've, um, connected some of the approaches that we're taking to the priorities that we've developed through strategic planning process. Next slide, please. This slide simply summarizes, uh, in broad strokes, the process, uh, by which we, um, develop the budget, including the public input, analysis of that input, review of actual revenues and expenditures, opportunity for the board to provide feedback, et cetera, culminating in the town meeting, vote. Next slide, please. Um, so I wanted to briefly give people a, an idea of the community consultation process this year. Um, we had four forms on, on different nights. We had forms dedicated to some of our, um, New American populations, a special ed form, as well as just a general, more generally themed form. We have, uh, a, an online tool for budget input that remains open, so folks who either didn't attend those forums or who now want to provide some feedback, there's still a forum to do that. It's available on the website. And then, as we said, we, uh, turned it over to principals and, uh, gave them some direction about how to engage their staff, and you'll hear more about that, in order to identify some ideas. And then we have to work through prioritizing those ideas and, and kind of scoring them on the, uh, basis of how well they meet student needs. So I wanted to summarize some of the themes that came from the community consultation, both for new investments and for reductions. Uh, you'll see that some of the things appear on both lists. That's not uncommon. Some people say add this, other people say no, take it away. But just to give you a sense of all the things that are, that are out there, these are obviously not specific responses. They often are, um, more specific in, uh, their direction to us, although not always. But you can see it ranges from staffing issues to, uh, facilities issues and kind of everything in between. Okay, so now I'm going to turn it over to LaShawn and Tracy, who are gonna talk a little bit about the process that they specifically went through. Whoop, you guys got a mic over there, so I'll stay put.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to reiterate what Yao had said about the powerful connection that the building leaders and, uh, system leaders had made through this process. We're a group of very powerful, experienced educational leaders entrusted with the welfare of your staff and your students. So we've taken opportunity and initiative to draw together, uh, to identify how we get on the balcony, um, because everybody's always busy doing the dance and not looking at what it looks like from the top. And that's really our role. So we're on the balcony, uh, and doing the dance. So it's kind of this going back and forth constantly in the roles that we are in as building leaders. So we identified a goal that the building leaders and the district system leaders would create a united budget request that would further the district's miss, mission. Our objectives were to identify activities that would curtail or eliminate in order to fund other priorities, and to identify what efficiencies in our operations are possible without sacrificing quality. Um, we were asked to do this with our building and with our faculty. Uh, we acknowledged that we were all going about it in a semi-different way. And we're really excited about this new move toward collaborative process across our systems leader, and we can come up with better ways to do this more consistently. So we're excited about the opportunity. Now we're opening up that conversation collectively to have a more efficient, uh, process. So we have all gone through that process in different ways of eliciting feedback from our faculty in regards to staffing and budgeting priorities. On November first, the systems leaders had our, uh, monthly meeting, and we took the opportunity at this meeting to unpack the mission of the Burlington School District with a facilitator to identify really what the mission means to each of us as leaders. So our objective was to build alignment across buildings and programs, and to really help us stop looking at, I need this, you need that. It's really what do we need for all students. And we're looking at this from the all-student perspective, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. So we took three or four hours, it was quite a day, talking about our mission and unpacking it, to lead in to our next meeting, which was on November sixth. So on November sixth, um, we set forth a process in which we were to narrow our budget ideas that we were going to present to the board. Again, our method was to get on the balcony, look at the bigger picture, and connect each budget, budgetary request with an assigned area within the strategic plan. So we took all of our collective input from our faculty and from what we know as building leaders as important. And then we took the time to actually dive in and say, how's that really connected to our strategic plan? That was the first step. And really working on that premise, um, from Ron Hyfetz, if you're familiar at all with his work in educational leadership, is that people are willing to make sacrifices if they see the reason why. So again, backing up from, I need this. It's what do we need for all students. So in looking at how we, um, place our priority budgets, um, needs for all students, we applied a rubric that we identified that had specific criteria, um, most of them pointing for, how does this budget request benefit all students? And not my students in my building at this time, but over time and for all students. So that was the process that we underwent. Um, and then we were gonna share out and synthesize this information with each other so that we could share it with you this evening.
Okay, perfect.
Thanks, Tracy. So what I'm gonna share with you is a little bit about some of the ideas that we came up with. And this is kind of a preliminary list. And so when you look at this, these are the things that we came up with and we kind of synthesized them by looking at our strategic plan. So these have to do with inclusive teaching and learning. And so when you're...
So, these have to do with inclusive teaching and learning, and so when you're thinking about inclusive teaching and learning, you're looking at closing the achievement gap, so you're looking at, what are some things or ask that we're, we're, um, looking to have in the classroom to help all of our students achieve the goals of their education experience with us? Um, and another piece I just wanted to mention, and I've heard it mentioned so many times tonight, is putting students first, and so one of the things, as a, as a group, we all talked about students. We've talked about how we can help propel them, how can we help them to, um, you know, take their education and move it forward, how can they reach for the stars, how they can be the best that they can be? So, that is definitely part of our discussion, and I was so glad to hear tonight that I believe Commissioner Pillsbury and a few others had mentioned students first. Next slide. Oh, hurry there. Um, so the next preliminary draft is around equitable culture and climate, and so when you're thinking about our equitable culture and climate, we're really looking at safe and healthy schools. We're looking at how can we can create a robust learning environment for all students again? So, that's how to create the support that they need to be ready for learning. And last, we have, um, our draft for, uh, the extension of the equitable culture and climate, so this is an extension of that. And here, we're looking at data, so when, uh, systems leaders, we were all together, we were looking at the data, what do we have to back up what we're saying? What do we have as far as anecdotal data, formative or summative data, to be able to look at, to be able to help us make informed decisions? And so, the climate survey was very clear and concise around some of the areas that we were looking at, um, when we were looking at our, our areas for strategic planning. So, it fit very nicely, it dovetailed just perfectly with what we were, we were talking about. And lastly, we, um, we're looking at what's next. So, actually, on November 19th, we're gonna come back together again, as we did the last two times, on the 1st and the 6th, as systems leaders, and really talk about the information that we have laid forth, and we'll probably synthesize it a little bit more, and we're also looking at feedback from the board, if there's things that, um, you guys would like to share with us, we'd like to be able to use that in our next meeting to be able to talk that through as a group. As, as Superintendent O'Bang mentioned, um, Claire was with us, um, at our last meeting, it was really wonderful for her to be able to see our discussion, and to hear the discussion, and be part of that, just from kind of watching, and I think that, um, for all of us, we were very enthusiastic, very excited about the work we were able to do together as a team, to really help our students move forward, and so, that's the premise that we're working in, and we're gonna continue doing that as we move forward in this budgetary process.
Thank you, we're gonna, we're gonna move on to the next session, but we'll pause if you have any quick questions for our systems leaders while we've got them at the table, around the process. Commissioner Curry.
Thank you. You guys totally rock, thank you very much, um, for what you're doing, it's, it's really nice to see this kind of, um, collaboration and part of the vision, I think, that people have had for a long time. So, my question is, and I emailed this Yao too, I am interested in, um, your thoughts on the equity index, whether it is working, or whether there are additional criteria that could be overlaid to make it a little more targeted, so that's one thing, you don't have to answer it now, and then we have, um, still a number of legislative, you know, requirements, we have Act 77 still, Act 173 is new, and a real opportunity, I think, so I'm just wondering if you would be able to, you know, does, your, I know this process will take time to design, but it seems to me, there's an opportunity to sh- I would overall like to see resources shifted towards, you know, reading by third grade, to make that happen, I'm sure you would too, you know a lot more about it than I do, but, um, you know, how can we restructure the high school to take advantage, leverage Act 77 to free up some resources to invest in, you know, K through 3, so that's my overall comment. Thanks.
Thank you, Liz, that will certainly be a big part of the conversations, uh, leading in, and we really were prioritizing, uh, putting up resources upfront that would, uh, really leverage, um, success as students progress through the ages, the grades, thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Vanka, and then Pillsbury.
Um, so on one of your slide, slides, I noticed that you had the word behavioral interventionist, which I haven't seen used in the district, I know we have behavioral coaches currently, so I'm just wondering what that means? And then I have a second question.
Hopefully this thing does not tip over.
I know.
So, we were looking for the behavioral interventionists to really, um, be able to work with students in the classroom, and so right now, you have coaches that are really working with teachers, and so we were looking at the interventionists to be more in the, in the classroom setting, to be able to help with students on the frontlines.
Great, that sounds good, hands on.
And behavior interventionists would be trained educators, uh, highly trained individuals.
Um, and then my second question is, I'm just wondering if there's any discussion on ensuring that our magnet schools continue to thrive in our district, and any interest in, um, expanding magnet schools to middle school?
How about you answer that one?
So, absolutely, we're gonna continue our work with our magnet schools, um, here, here. Um, and so, there has not necessarily been a discussion on, um, how that extension goes to middle school, however, I do know that, uh, both of the middle schools do have some pieces of the work that we do in the magnet schools there already, um, and so, our goal would most definitely be that that would continue, and if anything, we add would be even more robust, um, as they go and get ready also to go to high school, so we'd like to see that extension go, you know, vertically all the way up.
Great, thank you.
And, and the push from the Agency of Education is to really introduce students in the middle grades to more flexible pathways. Um, right now, as you may or may not be aware, that all of the, um, Act 77 work has been focused on the high school level, um, and now they're pushing down to the middle grades, which is awesome, it's where it needs to be.
Great.
I just wanted to ask a question, you asked for our feedback reflection, some of us aren't as articulate, but would like to give that reflection, can we email somebody that, with all our thoughts?
Absolutely, yes, please.
The other thing that I just wanna say, children first, uh, also, each one of our elementary schools, our middle schools, high school, is a unique community, they do not have to reflect one another. I, I like diversity in the schools that we have, rather than all the same. The word stylist is used, I prefer to use the word diversity in our schools, because our children are all different, our parents are all different, and they need to find a school that fits their, their learning style, the way they interact with other people, and I really hope that we don't get so diff- so unified, that we are, that we are just like, I don't know, uh, something that you can't differentiate, I would love to be able to differentiate, so that all of you, I, I'm thinking about the children and families in your community, we do have choice, people go to the community that really fits their child's...
Thank you, Commissioner Pillsbury.
So, if you had any, um, emails that you wanted to send, you can send them to Nathan, and he'll make sure he...
Nathan?
Yes, yeah, our committee will get it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fisher.
I think it would just be helpful if we got this, these presentations in advance, and then, and then could review them, and then be more prepared to ask questions, so, and that's an ask of, of Superintendent, that we, we get these, we're trying to do better in our, in our meeting planning to get these out the Friday before. And, and secondly, uh, to Commissioner Pillsbury, I hear what you're saying, I get that, right? I, I know my experience with, with our elementary school about, every elementary school has its own flavor, style, however you wanna put it, but to me, it's important that I represent, and we all represent, the whole city, and so in terms of services and availability of services, I think we should drive for consistency across schools. Right, there are, there absolutely are differences, right, especially with the magnet schools and programmatically, but in terms of services, I think that we should be offering the same services in the New North End that we do in the South End, that we do in the Central District.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher.
I don't think I would disagree with that, except that they ought to also be creative possibly.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Thank you, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass over to Director Labrie, but I would say that there is extreme amount of, um, diversity among our schools, uh, but we are working on system alignment, and they're finding, there's a term called, and you can look this up, Commissioner Pillsbury, it, um, called Simplexity, and it talks about keeping it simple, but at the same time, the complexity of a organization, and that's what we're working on, is some coherence around it, so we're not saying that there's an individual component, but there needs to be some consistency and be a support, and one of the things I wanna be able to say, as a Superintendent to parents, is that whatever school you go at, you're gonna get a certain standard, um, not that you go to that school because that school's really special, but that school isn't, so we're striving for that level of, um, excellence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Since it's still early, I'm gonna indulge in a little philosophical, uh, sidebar, that I promise I'll stay, what was it, two minutes? Is that the allocation? I'm gonna stay within two minutes. So, one of the things I, I heard, and it stuck with me, um, in one of my previous roles, working for the state legislature and sitting in the Appropriations Committee, was a, uh, during the, uh, significant recession we faced, uh, one of the members in kind of advocating for the, um, the budget proposals that he was putting forward, said, you know, "In difficult times, people first, then things," and I thought that was a pretty simple and compelling statement, um, and I think it resonated with a lot of people, and I think that, to some degree, is consistent with what Commissioner Pillsbury was saying. But, I also wanna point out that there's a reason why we've had to pass bonds for things like deferred maintenance and a new high school, and it's because public entities, by and large, in my experience, are really good at putting people over things, and sometimes we have to make, and you folks have to make that really difficult choice about determining whether or not there's a long-term thing that we need to do, even at the expense of a role, or a position, or an idea, or an investment, and I'm not saying which one that is, that's for you folks to make, but I just wanna caution you that we need to think about the long-term health of the system, and sometimes that involves spending on things as opposed to people, and that's a challenge, but it's one, I think, that's worth embracing. So, moving on, um, I provided here a budget landscape, just to give you a sense of some of the pressures, and I'll, I'll talk, uh, in a little more detail about some of them, but there's a structural budget challenge, I'll come back to that, there's rising wage of benefits costs, um, we have labor negotiations, we're not sure how those are gonna play out, we have an uncertain legislative environment, uh, folks may have heard, some proposals, there was one late in the gubernatorial campaign from the governor suggesting that we could devote some additional sales and use tax revenue to a kind of early education program, um, I believe it was, uh, an attractive idea, again, conceptually, but just to give you a sense of the devils in the details here, um, the revenue that he was proposing to use is revenue that is now dedicated to the education fund, and so, um, by virtue of having that money in the education fund, it's eliminated the large deficits that have been in that fund the last couple of years, uh, which is a good thing, because it puts less pressure on tax rates, but it's an example where there's an attractive idea, and in fact, it would have the effect of taking money out of the education fund, thereby making it, um, more difficult, you know, in terms, you'd face higher taxes for the same level of spending, so, just to give you a sense, it's an uncertain legislative environment, we don't know what will happen, but sometimes even ideas that, uh, are attractive in concept have, um, details that can be problematic. There's a, uh, folks are probably aware, we've seen inflation rates tick up in response to action by the Federal Reserve, and I would add on here, um, we also have the impact of the tariffs that have been imposed, we're already seeing some challenges associated with, uh, with that, particularly when it comes to, um, getting, uh, the prices we've become accustomed to for, uh, for certain, uh, technology, um, and so, those pressures are expected to, to continue to increase. Obviously, um, we've talked a lot about the need for additional instructional supports and capital improvements already, so I don't think I need to, um, point out that those are, are needs. Next slide, please. Okay, so, uh, before we get to the expenditure side, I'm gonna move quickly through these slides, and I would just suggest that folks, um, if they want a little more, go back and, and look at them again, but I wanted to, um, remind folks and give folks a, a bit of background in terms of where the money comes from, that we actually get to spend on all the things that we do. There is federal sources, obviously, there's local sources, and there's a state education fund. On the next slide, I provide a little bit of detail about the local sources, and here, to be clear, I'm not talking about your property and your income taxes, I'm talking about things that kind of Burlington generates for ourselves uniquely, it might be a grant from a major donor, it might be because we charge rental, um, space to the city to use some of our facilities, those sort of things. This is the smallest, um, of our, of our revenue sources of the three big ones, as you can imagine. Uh, federal is probably the one that you've heard a lot about with respect to, uh, major federal grants here, so I've listed a few of the big ones, um, this is always a challenge in terms of estimating how much we'll get, because for the, uh, few years running now, these numbers have not been readily available, not only during budget time, this time of year, but months beyond, to the point where we have been starting our fiscal year, and we haven't even, um, received necessary clarity on what type of federal awards we'll get. Next slide, please. And then the state revenues, the big one here is, um, the education fund, this is the money that your, uh, education taxes, whether you pay by income, uh, or, you know, whether your income's sensitized or not, it goes in the education fund, and this is the, by far, the largest source of the money, um, that we use to operate the district. So, now we'll get to the fund stuff, expenditure pressures here, I, I talked about them generally, but I wanted to point out a few specific ones, one is that the current budget's supported by about $1.1 million of one-time money already, if, um, the prior year at this time, the board elected to devote surplus funds to support programming and, and operations of the district, um, that allows us to continue to do those things without having to raise that money on the back of taxpayers, on the other hand, it creates this structural gap between the kind of revenue that you have coming in annually, and the amount of spending you're doing. Um, oh, can you go back, Bonnie, I'm just wanna touch on a few more things. The other thing I wanted to just point out, at the bottom of this slide here, folks may have heard, uh, this, but, uh, VHI did announce, uh, their health insurance rate increases, and for next year, uh, we're looking at increases of over ten, 10% for the plan that the vast majority of employees enroll in, so that's a significant, um, cost increase, as you can imagine. Here's a little more general information on expenditures, and I have a chart to illustrate this that follows, I'm gonna talk about it, um, but it talks about essentially the fact that over 70% of the stuff that we spend money on is salary and benefits for our employees, um, and that we are also making these projections where, very far into the future, um, and so we know and expect that some of these variables will change, but by and large, we can kind of get within the ballpark, and on the next slide, you'll see kind of what the, um, expenditure breakdown is of, uh, the, uh, budget that we just, or the budget year that we just had audited, it's not quite complete, but these numbers are definitely rounded and, and close enough, they're not gonna change in any significant way, so it's just a graphic illustration of the various categories, and, again, I'd suggest, if folks are interested going back and looking this over, I won't linger on it, um, tonight, but I'm, the next couple of slides, as we just go through here, uh, provide a little bit of detail as to what those categories are, and I'm just gonna highlight a couple of the things that I think cause the most confusion when I hear public discussions about the budget. One is contracted services, I know it's fashionable for everyone to be like, "Oh, get rid of the consultants, get rid of that, this, that," um, one of the things that people should understand is that a lot of the spending we do in this vein is for substitutes through Kelly Services, something we're trying to move away, 'cause they're not particularly successful filling at the, at this time, but, um, that is one of the major costs, as well as contracted special ed supports, and all of our payments to our, um, private preschool partners, so by law, we have to pay for preschoolers who attend one of our community partners, this is part of the universal preschool, um, law, and so, that spending is accounted for in this area, so I think it's just important to understand that, um, while contracted services definitely include things like lawyers, or, um, your, someone to, uh, you know, help do architectural work, or something like that, um, there's also a lot of actually direct instruction embedded in, um, what we're spending on contracted services. And then, on, um, this slide, the one thing I wanted to point out here, other purchase services, I think anytime people see the word "other," they kind of think like, "Oh, that's code for, um, you know, we're not telling you what's in there." Actually, these categories are general descriptions that are taken from the, um, Chart of Account Standards that the, that the state has, something that they're in the process of revising, but that's where these titles, uh, by and large, come from. The big piece I wanted to point out here was just special education tuition, um, that's an area where we are seeing, uh, extremely high spending pressure, it's something else, something I flagged in the last two routine financial reports, but actually, we're doing a, um, kind of a more, a deeper dive into the spending trend we're seeing in that area right now, for the current fiscal year, because we... area right now for the current fiscal year, because we are seeing extreme pressure in that area, and that will definitely manifest itself in the budget recommendations when we get down to kind of hard numbers next year. But I wanted to point out that that's where that particular type of spending is reflected. So again, sometimes it's hard, I think, from the nature of these descriptions, to understand when the things that we're doing impact direct instruction, and this is just another area, so I thought that was important to highlight. Okay, there's a lot of variables that we don't know yet in the budget process. Some of them are work that we, within the district, have to do. Enrollment projections, as well as other financial projections are part of it. And there's also information that we need from the state, and that comes at various times. The thing probably the most to look forward to is December 1, there's a letter from the Tax Commissioner that gives us our first real hint at what the impact of our decisions are going to be on tax rates. It's not the only variable we need, but we kind of know, we get an insight into whether or not there's going to be major pressure irrespective of our spending, or whether or not any tax increases are going to be mostly driven by the choices that you folks make at the local level. Okay, so I want to transition to something a little more meaty, and something that I really think it's important that the board think deeply on, and doesn't need to be decided tonight, but definitely needs to be decided. So, we, while not, these aren't audited figures, but we're projecting right now that our FY18 audit will show a surplus of about, essentially, $1.4 million when it's all said and done. And in the next two slides, I've kind of highlighted some of the major areas where we were under our budget, or we were over our budget. The most obvious one that people probably expect to see on there is savings, you know, money we didn't spend due to the teacher strike. And the other one that, again, if folks remember, they might not be super surprised to see there, is some of the savings from the health insurance transition. Those are the savings that, again, were projected by the state, and why they then went back and said to school districts across the state, "You will now send us some of that money." And the way they staged this was in a two-year part. So this is the, kind of the net amount that we experienced this year, or this past year. Obviously, that includes some estimating on my part with respect to the amount of spending on the HRA, because that number with the challenges that have been discussed with future planning is by nature kind of an estimate, and we book a certain expense there, and in a couple of years, we'll kind of reconcile it over time, but it, by nature, has to be an estimate this time. Next slide, so I just wanted to, so you can see, I kind of go down the list there. If you add those up, you get somewhere over $1.4 million. Again, this is not every line that went up or down, these are like the big thematic areas where, as I reviewed the budget, I just saw savings. Some of these things are things we can take advantage of next year. Like, for example, we've had a couple of years now where our workers' compensation actual bills have come in lower than it was recommended by our broker to allocate for it. So I think we're at a point where I can confidently reduce the amount of money we're budgeting to that expenditure, and that just gives us more money to work with for anything and everything we're doing. Some of these areas are, this is a teacher strike, things that you would not expect or hope to incur, you know, savings from those things on an annual basis. And the last element here are a couple areas of significant overspending that I saw in my review, and I just want to, again, point, we had the special education cost, that has to do primarily with those higher levels of tuitions or services that we provide in school. So we had a couple areas there where those things obviously reduce the amount of surplus funds you have available, because we incurred higher costs than anticipated in those areas. So, here's where you come in. It's the board's duty to decide how we use that surplus, and state law gives you a few options, or really, they say, "You have to use it as part of your next budget year." So in this case, the budget we're building, fiscal year '20, unless you go to the voters and, for example, say, "We want to establish a capital reserve, we're going to start putting money into it every year." You can go to them and say, you know, "We want to do this specific thing, and that means we're going to hold this money aside for who knows how long." But generally speaking, if you're going to apply it to your budget in the budget you're building, then you have to decide whether or not you're going to use it on, essentially, to support ongoing operations, things that we would intend to do every single year in this, you know, and this money would support it, or are you going to use it to support kind of one-time investments or expenditures? And, as I mentioned, the past couple of years, the, going back to when there was an allowable growth cap, the board made a kind of pragmatic decision to say, "Well, we don't want to have to cut our services any further, and we are not allowed to grow our budget anymore, so we are going to apply some of the surplus in order to sustain that programming, to not have to cut it." We're not in that situation now, so we could go out and we could say, "We want to put this money towards supporting our general operations." And what that would do would mean for any given level of spending, right, we don't need to raise quite all the money to achieve that level of spending, because we've got this surplus, which means that taxpayers will pay a little bit less, right? So option one, taxpayers get some saving in the first year, which has advantages that I'm sure you're all aware of, but it does have this disadvantage of we go another year building in this type of structural gap. And as I've talked about with special ed and some of the decisions tonight, there's no guarantee that we would continue to generate a surplus in this ballpark in the future. I obviously would hope we would, because we're talking about something that's, you know, 1% to 1.5% of our budget on an annual basis is pretty reasonable, but as we saw in the information provided up there, we achieved that in part because of some pretty major one-time events that we wouldn't expect to have happen every year. So option two is we use the money, but for example, we use it on one-time expenses such as our capital investments. So the idea here is, for example, instead of bonding for all of the capital investments that we would make next year, we could say, "Well, you know what, we've got a certain amount of money that we're going to put, we're going to kind of pay as we go for that, instead of borrowing, right?" And the advantage, obviously, to that approach is if you borrow less money now, then the debt service you have to pay, year after year after year, on that debt is lower, right? It's like putting a larger down payment on your house, you have a lower monthly mortgage cost. The disadvantage, of course, is in the first year, your tax rates are relatively higher because you could have pumped all this money into buying down tax rates. It's fundamentally the difference that we're talking about here. So I want to pause there and just see if there's any questions, if, I'm not sure if I did a good, I see some people nodding, I'm not sure if they agree, or they're just sleepy, so I want to give people a chance to say, "That's confusing," or if you have other questions, I want, I think it's important everyone to understand the consequence of this decision.
Commissioner Barlow?
Thank you for that presentation. I was wondering if, we have two options available, we could also split some of each?
Yes.
And we don't have to get voter authority for either?
Well, I would, I mean, what I would say is, if we, in either of those cases, the budget that we build for fiscal year '20 would include this amount of revenue, so effectively, voters, when they pass your budget, are saying, "Yes." The difference is, in that little asterisk part, if you want to say, like, "We want to set this money aside to build the next BHS, the 2075 version of BHS when we renovate it again," then you have to separate, have a separately warned article that asks voters, say, "We want to establish a capital reserve and put money in it for that purpose."
Thank you.
Commissioner Olwell?
So what was the $75,000 from a senior?
Yeah, Bonnie, could you just go back? Sorry to interrupt the minutes there.
That was never--
Two slides, I think, just so people can see, yeah, what Commissioner Olwell's referencing. I think it's one or two, I think it's two slides. Oh, other direction there.
She--
Oh, other way. Don't worry, we'll get to those slides. One more, perfect. So there's a 75 vacant senior director position, that was the senior director of, I think it was called, it was Information and Infrastructure or something, it was Paul Irish's position.
But didn't he leave the year before last?
This is, this is the audited FY18, so this is the year that he left.
Oh.
And, yeah, okay, clear? Okay.
Commissioner Fisher?
Can you give an example of a capital usage of funds that wouldn't be covered by the $19 million bond plus the $2 million per year?
No, I'm actually, well, I'm sure we could, we probably could come up with examples of that nature. What I was kind of suggesting is not that, it's more like saying, "Okay, for example, we're going to invest over the next year a significant amount of money in our architects and the other technicians who have to kind of now really refine that BHS design. We will, absent any other change, we will pay for that by issuing debt, right, bonding, and the proceeds from that debt will pay for that work. But if we have $1 million to pay the first $1 million of that work, then instead of needing to borrow $4 million in the first year, we only borrow three, right, because this $1 million makes up that difference." And so, that means that in every future year, when we look at our debt service, we need to borrow somewhat less.
Can I just say, even looking for, I mean, in immediate term, it would mean that there would be a lower tax impact, right? Because we're not asking for as much for our debt service, we wouldn't have put that in our budget that year. So that's a consideration, and I think Commissioner Barlow's question was a good one, in terms of the board can look at the remit of both, or maybe even a three-way, right? You can look at, okay, some dollars for capital stuff, and then some dollars for resource, bringing down the tax resource piece, and even some money for initiatives that's one time, right? So there's different ways you can do that, so it's something we wanted to get you to start thinking about, how we could leverage that opportunity.
It's a great thought, people versus things, right? To go back to your two-minute drill.
There is a point.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Curry?
So, thank you for this presentation. How much, so is there a way to get a metric on that? Like, if we leveraged one-time money to free up operating dollars, because it wouldn't be going to debt service, what, where's like that, like, how much--
How much, how much lower would our budget be every year?
Would you set aside to achieve like a X percent? Like, what's that leveraging formula?
Not a huge amount for a million dollars, you know, in the grand scheme of what we're planning.
Well, I don't mean like the whole amount, like, how do we get any metric? Like, $500,000 would offset--
I could, I mean, I could look, I could do a little--
Free up X amount of dollars. Like, how much would it leverage?
I could do a little, a little estimate of that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Curry. Commissioner--
And I just had a quick question. I mean, part of option two, don't we already see some of that in our current budget surplus? I think you had a $63,000 surplus because we haven't borrowed of the bond.
Yeah, so that's kind of right. One of the items that helped produce this surplus was, I put up there, was lower debt service payment than we had budgeted for, and that came about for two reasons. One, because we borrowed somewhat less than we had intended to borrow, but that wasn't, that was simply because the work that we had intended to do on the preschool ended up getting postponed, or I don't even know how to describe it, delayed, postponed, reconsidered, and so obviously, we didn't go out and borrow as much money because we knew we weren't going to be doing that work. And then the other part is that we, there happened to just be a reasonably, like, the city did a good job, Rich Goodwin, our partner at the city, did a good job, and there's still a reasonably favorable interest rate environment. This is, again, borrowing that happened more than a year ago, so more recently, that environment's not as favorable, but again, that helped us last year. He was, people were projecting, have been projecting interest rates to rise for some time now, and now they are, but we were prepared to accommodate that last year, we didn't have to.
Thank you. Commissioner Fisher?
No, no, just scratching.
Thank you, Nate.
Okay, so I just want to carry on, a quick wrap-up here. Bonnie, if we could go on, so next steps, whoops. Next steps, just so you get a sense of the kind of work that we are doing, you heard LaShawn and Tracy talk about all the kind of evaluation of various ideas, that work's continuing, obviously. We need to assemble the enrollment, the enrollment data and projections for next year, as well as the way we develop the budget for staff is to do individual-by-individual salary and benefit projections, so like, we look through and we know exactly how much each person should make based on their collective bargaining, and we know how much their health insurance is supposed to cost, and we go through kind of person-by-person doing that. Obviously, we have to build in uncertainty around collective bargaining, but that's examples of the other type of work that we're doing to generate the actual hard numbers of the budget. Next slide. So, this is, I highlight a few areas where I feel like it's important for you folks to understand kind of what I'm asking of you. One piece is just in keeping with one of our policy governance requirements, we are supposed to make sure that we budget sufficiently for the board's prerogatives. So I think that there's more than enough money there already, but that's my personal opinion, you might disagree, and if you want to add, or if there's something else that's missing there, let me know, but that's one thing that we need feedback from you. Use of the surplus, we just talked about that at length. Allocation for contract settlements, that, again, is something where we know that these deals aren't all going to be done, and we need to make sure, and I think at this point, I've got a pretty good answer on what that is. I'm obviously not going to speak to it here, but that's, you know, so I'll probably just seek to confirm my understanding. And then the last thing there is kind of general guidance on spending growth. So at some point, it's helpful to us if we know kind of how big of a list of changes, increases, decreases, whatever it might be, is kind of in the ballpark. And I think sometimes in the past, we've come forward with things, and then it's like, "No, go back and, you know, trim it, or expand it," and sometimes both in the same breath. So it's just helpful for us to get a sense of the board's comfort level. One of the hard parts for you folks is we don't get the variables necessary for you to translate that spending into a tax rate increase until very late in the process. So unfortunately, you have to be able to provide some of that guidance before you really know the full impact. Doesn't mean things can't be changed later, but it just helps us kind of narrow the scope of what we bring forward so that it meets your needs.
Commissioner Gulick, thank you.
Good question. You want a lot of feedback from us, and I'm just wondering when that happens and what that looks like.
So, I think we can both--
Right.
I'll speak to it after you.
Yeah, not all of it needs to be in this type of a forum, for sure. I think that's something that often can be, you know, you can kind of organize through the chairs. Obviously, some of these things, at the end, there's an opportunity, when you're debating the budget, to have the public discussion, and if there's significant differences, you folks will work that out.
And to speak to that, so as chair and with Superintendent Obang planning a meeting in the last week of November, we'll send out, when people are available, to get together to have those discussions.
Okay. You said it, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Curry?
I was just wondering when or where we would see the feedback from the public that was given in all the public forums?
I can, like, the community forums, I will ask the people who kind of were the hosts, so to speak, at those to kind of assemble their, assemble in some kind of shareable way.
Like, the way you did it last year was great.
Yeah, and I can't remember, I think we just put it in a spreadsheet or something.
Yeah, thank you.
I think we can easily do that with our online tool, we can print an update at this time and post it, that's easy enough.
Good, thank you.
And I also appreciate Superintendent Obang, in this season, where we have been receiving a lot of budget emails, that we should be directing them also to the district website that we have for that tool, for that reason.
Right. So there, I know there's a lot of information that's been thrown at you, and the chair is on sort of getting some coherence around this, because we do need some direction from the board as we assemble this, and Nate sort of said it, that the last minute, when we have the real, all the information, is when you have to make decisions, which is unfortunate, the way the state runs its process, that's the process we have to work with. So please--
Yep. Can I ask you a question? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I just wanted to get in the queue.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
So my question is, is there any way you can assess what the, out of the starting gate CLA adjustment will look like in terms of when people hear about the school budget tax increase, which won't be, you know, it'll be portion, a portion of it will be a CLA gap adjustment? Like, is there any way to know? Last year, what was it, seven, six percent? Do you remember?
There's no way, there's no way. I don't know. That information comes pretty late in the game. I believe that the CLA will further move in a manner that causes tax rates to rise because we are, you know, we're just, we've kind of triggered the need to do the citywide reassessment, but that hasn't been completed and won't be for a couple of years, and so in order for that number to move in the direction that would be favorable from a tax rate standpoint, essentially, you'd have to experience declining property values in Burlington, and I don't believe that that is what has happened over the past year.
So is it safe to assume that it would be at least six percent? Or did that rely on other factors?
I wouldn't, I don't know, I don't know what the six percent is specifically, but it would--
Oh.
would, I, I could-
Like, our budget increase was only one point nine percent?
Right, and there's a few different reasons for that, so, I don't know yet, I mean, I guess I wouldn't say it's safe to assume any particular number, but-
Okay.
It won't be helpful in all likelihood.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. In interest, interest of time, I will reserve any comments, but Executive Director Lavery will share this PowerPoint, so you can review it, but this is the first and last time you'll see it, you'll get tired of some of this information, because we're going to keep hammering it, and until by the time January, hopefully, you've got a good command of the information to make a good decision, so, we will be communicating with you on a regular basis around the budget process, and encourage you to be engaged around what you want us to kind of look at in terms of bringing something forward. I'm going to move quickly to the next item, and I'm going to switch it around, because I know I have one of our staff members who's trying to get home to her little ones. So, Kristi, I'll ask you to come up and, if you could put up the climate. While Kristi and the team are coming up, and Bobby's coming up as well, too, they're going to discuss the climate piece, but I wanted to take the opportunity to recognize, I think it was the last board meeting, we recognized Kristi for receiving the, the Expanded Learning After-School Award, and she was, she was in absentia, and she's here today, so, I wanted to kind of acknowledge her. Kristi's done significant work with Expanded Learning, she's gotten us hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars to improve that program, and is continuously trying to fill the staff holes. That's one area, we have challenges with staffing because of where they, there are a lot of university students, and they take off and go back to their residence and things like that, but Kristi does an amazing job of keeping the roles on. So with that, you have seen the climate information that was posted, but Kristi and Bobby are on the climate team, and have been leading this, and so they're going to take us through a little bit of analysis and some of our next steps, which is the, the important pieces.
Where everybody go, because this is the best part of the night right here. There you go.
Great, well, thank you, everyone. We're excited to be here. It's been, been a long process, so I think we're really excited to talk about the opportunities and the different pieces that the climate survey results are going to afford us to report as a district. So, in summary, really, some of the overall data from the survey really tells us that it confirms what we've been, what we've known all along, right? So our assumptions around things that need to be a priority, in terms of social, emotional security, relationship building, open communication, and resource allocation, and it also highlights strengths, things that we are on the right track, things that we're doing really well as a district, in terms of families and students and staff feeling like the district welcomes and accepts people from diverse backgrounds, that adults are, in the district, respect differences in students, the safety rules and norms, and then the school connectedness and engagement. So those were some of the critical kind of takeaways from the survey that says, okay, here's where we know, areas that we want to focus on, and here are some things that we're doing well. So just to back us up a little bit, how did we get here? You know, just to refresh, like, why, why the climate survey, and why now? So the district had facilitated climate surveys in the past, the results had not been shared publicly, and the survey at that time was really conducted by district staff. So since this time, there's been this underlying need expressed by parents, you know, and staff to conduct another climate survey, where results will be shared in a really transparent way with our community and stakeholders, and where the survey would be conducted through a third party. And the strategic planning process that the district undertook a couple of years ago really afforded us that great opportunity to do so. So, the district held a series of different community meetings in 2016 through 17, where we gathered input for the strategic plan. During the community discussions, there was a focus on our goals that you're really familiar with now, in terms of ethical climate and culture, and inclusive teaching and learning, and specifically called for benchmark data for the district to see where we currently fall in those areas.
Sure, okay, all right. So the district was able to secure funding through the Bay and Paul Foundation, and work with the National School Climate Center to get that third-party input and support around administering the school climate survey, and we thought that was critical, so that as people look at the results, they can say, had nothing to do, we developed the questions, this is a peer-reviewed, pretty standard national climate survey, has been administered all over the country thousands of times, and so, we just thought that brought some, some validity, thank you. It's late. How y'all do this all the time? Some validity to the data analysis as we start looking through that.
And, as a reminder, so there are two sets of data. So one, we had the National School Climate Center data, and then we also had the data provided by the University of Vermont. And there were two sets of data, because our, you know, working with the National School Climate Center in the lead-up to the survey, we realized with help from our Restorative Practitioners Collaborative, that the National School Climate Survey is really only focused on, at the school, school-based level. And we knew that a lot of the, the need also for the baseline data included central office administration and others, so, knowing that the National School Climate Center data was going to be really valuable, and, and for our schools, we wanted to continue to do that, and we were able to work with our partners at UVM, who were fantastic, and they stepped in to really help develop the separate survey, which would focus primarily on central office. It was modeled right off of the National School Climate Center, so that those results could be paired in a viable way.
Maybe expand on that a little bit. The, the National School Climate Center really speaks to the experiences of students in our district, and how do your parents see that experience for our students and our kids, and how teachers see the experience for students, and then how students feel about their experience at school. So that's a real differentiation, too, we also wanted adult feedback, how do they, what do they experience? What's their reality of dealing with the day-to-day activities in the district as employees, and also as parents?
So, who took the survey? As you can see here, we had staff, students, and parents all had the opportunity to take the survey, so we did several, you know, tiered outreaches, primarily online, via social media, through emails, automated calls. We worked very closely with multilingual liaisons to have outreach to our New American families. We did special sessions with our students, where they could participate during the school day. We also dedicated faculty and staff meeting time for, for staff to take the survey as well, and then held multiple community events for our families across the district, both in the South End and the New North End, and in the central area as well, for families to come and access our computer labs to take the survey. And so our participation rates. So, here it's broken down through the National School Climate Center, and then the UVM. And again, there is no way for us to extrapolate the duplicity of parents who might have taken the UVM survey and the National School Climate Center survey, because again, we wanted this to be an anonymous piece, so, we had, again, you can see the, the results here. We are, you know, I think one strong takeaway that we felt good about is, for the National School Climate Center, a goal was to reach a standard best practice for them is thirty percent of your parent population, and we were able to hit that target for the district, so that, that was something that was really successful. I think we learned a lot about, a lot of lessons learned around how to do this differently, and what things we would do to really work more closely with our schools to ensure a higher rate for our students and our staff for the next time around.
Timing's important, too.
Timing's very important.
At the very end of the year was difficult, and I think that impacted how many results we got at cert levels, too.
Yeah. So this is just one slide that really captures, overall, from the National School Climate Center, what are the results telling us? Again, we really felt like the results of both sets, from UVM and the National School Climate Center, really confirmed a lot of what we're feeling were areas that we needed to focus on in the district, and really prioritizing relationship building. The results are all available, the detailed reports are available online, so we don't want to spend too much time in this space really digging down into those, but I think this, this chart really highlights from students, staff, and parents, who are mostly pretty much aligned for a lot of the different pieces of where some of the focus areas are. Again, that sense of social, emotional security, and, and a highlight with that, the safety rules and norms, and the connectedness in the school engagement.
Is this the X or the Y axis? It's important to recognize, too, that what's considered critical in terms of true need in the district is something that would be lower than a two-point-five on the scale, so, none of that is below a three, which is important to recognize, that it's, we don't like to see that dip, we know that there needs to be improvement in that area, because, in my opinion, and probably many of my colleagues as well, that's social, emotional wellbeing, we want that at five more than anything else in our district. And so, what is a three? It's not a two, and it's not a one, that's important to recognize, but we do have to ask the question, why does that tip occur? What's happening for our students and their experiences in the building? How can we improve it?
I had just one piece there, go back to that slide quickly, that you wouldn't have seen probably ten years ago, I know in my experience, around the social media, and, and looking at that in terms of across the country, how are people dealing with that, it's a new anomaly, you know, how do we address that? So that's a new area that we'll have to embark in as well, too, in terms of how do we address that area.
Okay, so again, the, the data really paints a picture of things that are going well in the district, and areas that we want to focus on and improve. Some pieces shed, you know, light on current issues, and such is the realization that despite recently completing the strategic plan, nearly two-thirds of the parents do not feel that there's a compelling vision for the district. And other data really reinforces the improvements that we've been targeting for the past couple of years, such as the need to build better relationships across the board.
And we also recognize through this, too, I think it was important, you saw that people really felt that diversity and equity was respected in our district, and from years ago, that was set as a priority for our district, that we continue to maintain and discuss that, create positions to support that, so you can see if something is done over time and has sustainability, it does have impact on how people relate to that and experience it, which is important to recognize, because that was in every category, that was in the top three, it was number one for parents and students, and I think three for staff, if I remember correctly. So, again, that sustained mission involved in that is really important to recognize and celebrate, that we maintained it, we continued it, it has dipped off at times, but we're, we did the work, and we have lots, lots of ways to go on it, but, but it just shows that sustainability and continuing the progress and that kind of thing, that does show.
So, what steps have been taken so far? So, the data has been shared with executive council, it's been shared with system leaders, it's been shared with, with our board, and we did a press release, and all the data has been uploaded completely from UVM and the National School Climate Center, it's all available on the website. So I do think it's a really transparent, you know, everything's in there for people to look at. And we also have our year-long focus, our PD focus, on restorative practices, which inherently, at the heart of it, is that relationship building, which we're really excited about.
Schools have their data as well.
Schools have their data as well, yes.
Yeah, and that segues perfectly into what we're doing next, so, we did see those dips, and so we want to, so we have the data now, but what does it mean? And so really looking at and delving into it and seeing, well, why is the social, emotional experiences for some of our students, staff members, not where it needs to be? What's at the root cause of that? And then how can we improve, more importantly, most importantly, how can we improve on that? What kind of systems can we put in place? How can we create a climate and culture that does really hold those things in high esteem and develops programming and vision and mission that really supports people in that way? And so, we're meeting with our partners, we're going to continue working with UVM in this regard, we're meeting on the nineteenth, and we're discussing budget, the budget that day, that was mentioned in the budget presentation as well. A part of that day, we'll also be talking with UVM, Bernie Scara, about a protocol to start that discussion with our individual staffs, looking at the building levels, and then continue those discussions at the district level as well, and really just parsing out like, what are the areas that were meeting many of these criteria that were, I'm getting a word again, Kristi, who said validate before? Help me out, somebody. So, sort of a gap analysis of what we're doing well, and then how we're doing it, the things that we are instituting to develop those, that criteria that was looked at through the survey, and, and then where we're sort of, where the gaps are, and how we can improve it, and, and ways we can do that. So, we'll start that discussion, see what our individual staffs.
Great.
Thank you. I know Kristi has to run off, but we would entertain a couple of quick questions before we-
Is this something that's going to go on every year, that we're not just doing it once? That it's becoming yearly?
Yes.
And did Bay and Paul give money?
Well, I don't know if Ben and Paul will continue to fund it, but there is a requirement in Vermont's interpretation of ESSA that there will be maintained, we will be maintaining school climate surveys in the state of Vermont, so, it, it may or may not be, they're determining what the survey will look like right now, it will not have to be administered again this year, thank goodness. People do get survey fatigue, so, so they're in the process of developing that, and there's not real clarity on what that'll look like at this point in time, but there is clarity that it will be a responsibility of school districts across the state to do that in the future.
Yeah. Will be a requirement for us to do the survey, but also, if you look at areas, and the practitioners will tell you, an annual survey is not productive after you've done, people get fatigued, and you get the same, if you don't get the information, that's going to help you move along, but when you have a period of time in between, there's actions, and you can see, hey, we did this two years ago, now, where are we now? And that really helps you in terms of moving forward, otherwise, people call the survey again every year, and then you lose that, that effect.
Commissioner Curry.
Thank you. So, we only have to sit here and listen and ask questions, and we don't have to teach all day, so, thank you for being here later, that's how we do it, I don't know how you do it, thank you. So my question is around, sorry, it was two things, but I lost one. Oh, yeah, reconciling, so, right. So here's my question, concern, is that while diversity and equity might score high, my interest is in the makeup of who participated in the survey, it's one thing for the dominant culture to say diversity and equity's like, really happening, but it's another thing for the, you know, people who are not in the dominant culture, and is there any way to decipher that, or can we, you know, look at, in the future, drilling down a little more on that? And what, do you have participation rates by, you know, race, gender, income, LGBTQI, et cetera, et cetera?
Yes, we can, we can break that down. They provided all the raw data, so Bernice can do her magic with the numbers and provide pretty much anything that we need in that regard.
Is that available without violating confidentiality or anything like that?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, I believe that the, if you go into the, the link, that information is there, and probably your assumptions will be right, in terms of when you look at it, because, around that, but that's one, that's, an area we've had a discussion, because we were concerned, are we getting, you know, information just from a certain particular group only, and not getting a good cross-section?
And I'm sorry, where's the link? On the website?
Yeah, it's on the website, yeah.
It's also embedded in the, in the, you should be able to click on the, where it says website on the, on the slide.
Presentation. And then, how will, what's the process for strategies being developed to address the social and emotional security?
Yeah, yeah, restorative practice is part of that, and, for sure, that relationship building, both for our students and for our staff, so, restorative practices plays a huge role in that. I think just a concerted effort, too, I think you saw in the budget asks from the principals that sat here before us, that they are focusing those areas of social, emotional development and mental health needs, so, I think it's, what we're looking at is, in terms of a priority and a need in our district.
Thank you.
And through the strategic planning process, we did have established a mental health and wellness team, supported by our directors, student support services, especially, and there are nurses, psychologists, that group, so they've been kind of driving some of the needs and some of the budget asks are coming through lower Nugent, based on social, emotional needs that we have, and so what we're doing is working really hard to make the connections with the restorative practices, with the climate team, a number of teams coming together, so there's that coherence in terms of, okay, this is what we're doing, and we're all striving for the same goal, so, a lot of work to try to bring the people together, but, you know, we're moving.
Thank you. Commissioner Curry, and Commissioner Avanji.
I have a question about the graph, called the aggregate climate scores by population group, and specifically, I don't understand the numbers on the Y-axis labeled factor median. If you could explain that to me, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, well, I don't know how well I can explain it, but it's just the, there's a one-to-five scale, there's a Likert scale that they used on five criteria on the survey, and so, and then one to five, and so, and then five is like the optimum, the best, the ideal, one is worst-case scenario, and so, and to go in deeper than that, I don't know that I could do that right now, but it, it does also, on the report, show sort of what those mean-
Okay.
-in generalities.
And also, so, when I looked at the raw data of one of the reports, I, I don't understand how it correlates to the, to the X-axis. Where did those categories come from? The ones on, that are labeled on the X-axis?
That's what the National School Climate Center developed over their, their time administering the survey, and the- and the poignant parts of school district and school life that they felt related to school climate and culture.
Yep, so they have very clearly identified thirteen dimensions of what they believe to be a positive school climate, and those are those areas.
So when I look at one of the raw scores, it says, these are faculty responses, feels like a positive community, eighty-one percent said strongly disagreed with that, disagreed or strongly disagreed, where does that fit in?
So that, that's coming from a separate, I believe what, what's that? That's the UVM dataset, so this graph, and I apologize, I should have been clear, this chart, the aggregate climate scores by population group is specifically from the National School Climate Center.
Oh, okay.
This is not, this is not an aggregate of both the UVM and the National School Climate Center, so I...
So the other data is not included at all in this report?
The other data is available on the website.
All the raw scores are?
It is, yep.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at, okay, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Avanik.
There was, when we really looked at the questions, there was a concern that the way people viewed their school might be different than the way they viewed the central office or the district. And so we really felt, so there were about, what, twenty-eight questions perhaps on the district survey that took questions that were on the school survey and simply changed the question from your school to the district. And that's the only thing that was different about it. But the schools, we actually asked the national group if we could have questions that were specific to the district, and they said no. So this was, and there was a lot of concern by faculty and staff, what about this? Because it might be, the responses might be different. And so this was the way we decided it would be a good idea to handle it, was just take those questions that really dealt with leadership resources, overall district initiatives, vision, and take those questions and just simply change the language to district or central office as opposed to specifically school. So that's why they're two different surveys.
Thank you.
But, but is there, is there an analysis of the other survey?
Yes.
Yes, there is.
I just have the raw data, there's no...
There's a two-page executive summary on the, on the web, on the climate survey website, yes.
Commissioner Avanik.
I'm so sorry, I have several questions, because I think this climate survey is important and a lot of people's time and effort went into it. So I'm grateful that the district is investing their time in taking surveys on different levels. I think that continuity would be important, like let's retake this survey in a year and see where we're at, especially if the future plan is what we're counting on from today's slideshow presentation. So this is not a question necessarily for the presenters, but the NSCC data was published, we took this survey in May, the data was published August tenth. I don't know why it took three months for us to get here to be talking about it today in November. Another issue is that the respondents of the survey are uneven. So over ninety percent of the respondents across district were white, and over eighty percent of the respondents were not eligible for free and reduced lunch. So I think in the future, we need to make a better effort to reach out to our new American families. It was not, as far as I know, the survey was not translated into their language, and the liaisons did not have time to individually go with every family to fill out the survey. So, and then I'm a bit disappointed in this presentation because it has no data. Where's, this is the only slide with data. The UVM study, it's really only two pages of data, and there's a couple, couple of points in here, one already even mentioned, that are pretty disconcerting. So this was a survey, as Shelley just mentioned, that was taken only by adults in the district. And it would take time to bring the results up, but I just wanted to say the three areas. The district feels like a positive community. Over eighty-one percent of respondents disagreed with this statement. The district administration openly communicates with teachers and staff. Over eighty-one percent of respondents disagreed with that statement. The district administration is fair in the way they allocate resources. Over seventy-three percent of respondents disagreed with that statement. So I'll end there, because there's several more with lower percentages, but I'm just curious, what are we doing for future steps for those kind of issues?
Thank you. Commissioner Avanik, Commissioner Fisher?
I think she said, I think she said most of the stuff that I was gonna talk about. I think that the school data is pretty interesting, and I've been poring over it, but what's concerning to me is, is the district reports. And so I believe that there is something Superintendent Obang, on your performance goals around climate in the survey? So I think this is just not for conversation, but for me, this should be, this, we should use this as a metric for increasing, I think one of your goals is increasing the climate in the district, right? And so this is measurable. And so, you know, we talk about data-driven decisions and then performance. So to me, this is, this is, you know, a lot of the news is great, but I always look at what, what needs to be improved, and that's like, like Commissioner Avanik just said, pointed out, this is, this is some bad stuff in there. That's, that, I know, we painted a good picture in the, in the press releases, but eighty, what was it, eighty-one percent? That eighty-one point four eight percent of staffs disagreed that the district feels like a positive community. That's really concerning to me.
Thank you. Commissioner Curry?
So the whole point of doing this survey was because we had the goal in the superintendent's contract. I mean, that was, we knew we have a, we have a toxic environment at BSD. We have had that since before Superintendent Obang got here. And so after two very negative experiences with contract negotiations and a strike, that's about as low as you can go. And we had, and we still have considerable student, social emotional challenges, for example, in our middle schools right now, particularly at Hunt. You know, all of these problems, you know, I think we could talk with some administrators who have been here for a long time, have existed. Not all of them, but some of them have existed before. Some of them have begun to be resolved through restorative practices. And the whole point of doing this survey was because we needed baselines to measure. Like if you read the superintendent's goals, it was, the goal was actually to come up with a plan for improving the district climate. And so the plan was do the survey to get the baselines. And then I believe what my question was, what's the process for then putting in strategies to address these weak areas? But I mean, I think what I hear is people are eager to criticize the superintendent with, out the context, and I understand, you know, our district needs a lot of help, and there's a lot of history there, there's a lot of sides to the story. But all in all, I think our goal is to move forward in improving the climate, and, you know, it will have budget impacts, we will need to budget for that. But I, you know, I hear concern because people are new to this issue, or they've experienced from a different angle. And, you know, I think this is an example of what we should be doing.
Thank you. Commissioner Curry, Commissioner Avanik.
Oh, sorry, Superintendent Obang. Yeah, thank you. So the whole reason why we're doing this climate survey, because we did identify this as an area that we wanted to improve. And I would say that thirteen, two thousand thirteen, fourteen, twelve, eleven, the district identified climate as an issue as well too. And there were surveys that were done. When I arrived in fourteen, fifteen, the surveys were no longer happening, sixteen were no longer happening. So we started having a conversation around, we need to improve this climate. So if you look at the results from five, six years ago, you would see similar results in terms of the feelings. So it's nothing new, and at the opening of the, the presentation, they talked about, this is something we're picking up again. And I was happy to see that we had our team identified, okay, what's the strategy? When we spoke with the board last year, and we talked about how do we improve the climate? And we said, okay, well, we need to first of all, identify some areas. And we already had identified, so these assumptions, these, these results were no surprise to us in terms of the areas that we assumed, just kind of verified, yes, we were right. And so part of the superintendent's performance goals was to develop a plan, and so we're implementing the plan. Part of the plan was to get this team together to identify an appropriate resource and to get the data. I'm not defensive at all about the data, because once you have the data, then you have a target and you move forward. So I'd rather spend the energy talking about, okay, what's our next steps? I know people wanna say, well, there's this, this, yes, that's the data. You take the data, and then you put some actions in place, and then you measure it again, and you see if it improves. That's the process. This process was attempted five years ago, and then it was discontinued for whatever variety of reasons. But now we're here, and we get to, we've got a great team, we get a chance to kind of move forward. And so I would hope that I would get support from my board to say, yeah, whatever resources and supports you need in order for, to create the kind of positive environment in our district, then let's, let's do that.
Commissioner Pillsbury? Commissioner Avanik? You spoke in there, thanks. Commissioner Pillsbury?
I think it's important to say that, I think it's more the board that creates a climate in the community rather than one person, the leader, the superintendent. And I don't think that talking about eighty-one percent don't come, really it's superintendent's, it's really the board, the community representatives, and that's what I'm hearing, is that the boards, the past board created a climate that made people feel they could not be engaged, they could not, were not listened to, and it was really... And I wasn't even engaged with you guys, with that former board, I was just off in my own la-la land. But what I heard was, you know, people were just angry at the way they were treated. And so if we have as much impact, we have as much impact on the community's perspective on the school district as a superintendent does. And so it's our way of, it are, I think it's our responsibility to be engaged, to be seen as listening, and to be seen as proactive as a board. And it's not, I don't think that, and when, when they criticize a district, it's not, not pinpointing one person, and it's very important that our board work, that we function well together, and we also engage with our community.
Thank you. Commissioner Pillsbury, well said. Commissioner Golick?
I agree with that, thank you. And I get punchy after ten thirty, so if I start laughing hysterically, I'm sorry. But I did just wanna say that I think, I would like to caution the board members to start to editorialize people's comments. I don't think anyone here was vilifying the superintendent, I don't think that was suggested or insinuated, and, you know, just, I think we should avoid making those assumptions.
Thank you. Commissioner Golick, last comment, Commissioner Avanik.
Just, I like what Superintendent Obang stated, that let's look forward, let's see what, what the future brings. I like what Commissioner Pillsbury stated, because this is kind of in response to Commissioner Curry's comment, is that Superintendent Obang has been in place for three years. There was almost a strike two years ago, a strike a year ago, and then what have we done since the strike to improve climate? And as one example, and I spoke about this at public comment, cutting parent-teacher conferences at elementary level doesn't work. That's punitive towards teachers and families. And so that, that did the exact opposite to repair climate in our district.
Commissioner Fisher?
Sorry, I'll be quick. You were, both Commissioner Curry and Superintendent Obang, you mentioned resources to address this. I think that those can help, right? But I don't think it's, you know, lunch bags for staff or water bottles, right? I think it's actions and respect, and things that you can do that don't cost money that really make an impact, especially the staff. It's not, not focusing on resources, focusing on relationships with people and engage, truly engaging with staff. Perfect example is hiring. We were talking about hiring earlier, God, that seems like a long time ago, right? Hiring leader in the building, hiring leaders in the building without staff input, right? That has to impact climate, so there are things that we can do that don't cost any money.
Thank you. Commissioner Curry?
Thank you, yeah, I mean, I would wholeheartedly agree that the board is responsible for climate. And, you know, I think when you can't raise taxes and you have to tell your teachers that, that sucks. And so it was a very difficult, protracted time, and, you know, I think it's, I think you're right. The community did feel frozen out and not listened to, and I've heard that quite often. And, you know, that happened, and people were never interested in really understanding that. It was just in most people's eyes, wrong, or labeled as wrong. We were bad school commissioners, we were evil people, and we did terrible things. And, and that narrative is, you know, it's very divisive, and not, no one person here, I don't know about you, Mark, but no one person here has ever come up to me and asked what was going on, what that experience was like, to be vilified, to be blamed, and to, and to assume that there were other options that were viable at the time. There probably were, but no one has ever engaged me in a conversation about that. And so I don't know if you've been engaged, but, you know, there's a story there, just like there's a story behind every deficit that happened when you were on the board. So, you know, it's very, I guess, you know, mollifying for people to throw all this in the middle and I'll join you, but it is unfortunate that it comes burdened with, you know, some really amazing assumptions that I just find unfortunate that people can't ask and attempt to develop some collegiality, because it just creates that lack of unity that everybody is so looking for.
Well said. Commissioner Curry, I'm gonna give Commissioner Barlow one more, but...
I used to do this to Commissioner Porter, just to get his attention for one last word. I'll just say, yeah, I have no regrets about things that, decisions we've made in prior boards and things, but I will, I will echo, I think, what Superintendent Obang said. We should just look forward on this one and just move, move forward. Not vilify anybody from any board anytime.
Superintendent Obang?
Thank you. I'm gonna lay on a real positive note, that, oh, African proverb translated, you've heard it before, it takes a village, right? So I think it's all our responsibility to move it to where, to get to the future we want. So I know I'm gonna make an effort to do my part, and I know our staff are doing that. And with that, I'm gonna let you go, so you can go see your little ones before tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Equity inclusion.
Equity. Yeah, she's coming up. You have received this document, the Equity Inclusion Report. The last couple of years, we've been able to continue to improve, and I know you've seen it. So I've got Henry Sparks and Karen Vogel here, just to give some highlights. And I also, while I've got Karen here, Karen is our new data coordinator, second name, right? And someone mentioned earlier on around the equity index and some of the data pieces, and Karen's already working on that. So her charge is to look at our data systems and improve it so we can have good data and be able to share information with you. And that's one of the challenges we've had in the district over the last couple of years, getting good data, meaning the information, the sources sometimes were not totally accurate, and it's a continuous work in progress. So with that, I turn it over to you.
Yeah, let me just, I'm new here. It's past my bedtime, I'm losing my voice. So I'm Karen Vogel, I've been working for the district for eight years, I know some of you. I've been a math coach at elementary, it's great to be here tonight. And my new position is data systems coordinator, you got two of the three words. And I'm just thrilled to have this opportunity. As someone who's been working with teachers and students for many years, I love this district. I'm passionate about being here and working on behalf of students, and so, thanks for having me. And I've been really in the trenches with this, we have new state reporting requirements, super challenging, I've had to do a lot of time on working on that. However, glass half full with our new state reporting requirements, it provides us a little bit more of a lens. It's helped me to see, um, where our needs are as far as, you know, just reliability of data and what we're collecting and how we're doing it and how well our systems are working or where we need systems, right? So, so that's our work. Hi. Okay.
So what we, what we'd like to do, uh, this morning, tonight, uh, is just give a short overview of, uh, the disparities and then talk about where we anticipate going with our next steps and processes around, uh, systems alignment.
Then you could drop it at the end.
No. So these are some of the things that are priority to the district. Uh, as we think about some of the questions you all have just raised around where are we going and what are we doing? It is not just about, um, students, it's also about the adults as well. So as we think about our data, uh, we wanted to create Karen's position, so that gives us an opportunity to really create better systems, collect accurate data. So therefore, as we think about this report, some of you, uh, have been on the board for years and you know the history of this report itself. We went through a variety of different versions trying to get the report right. And Karen and I have been talking and we're at a different juncture where we have to really think about probably talking to Superintendent Obang about another process because one of the things that we do know is missing from the report is individual data from the individual schools. Uh, we want to talk about training for our planning room staff to enter data accurately. So as you know, each of the schools have a planning room staff. One of the things Karen and I and others have been doing is meeting with those folks monthly, uh, as we have been trying to do for the past couple of years was use one data management system. So last year, uh, we were using Swiss and we were using Power School. This year, we're just using Power School. That gives us a better opportunity of creating more accurate reporting and training the planning room folks as to how to enter that data. But also, as we think about a part of that management system for the planning room staff, we are aligning them to the work that we're doing with restorative practices and really, uh, paying more attention to student behavior and spending, students spending less time in planning rooms and more time in the classroom and learning. So with the coaches, one of the things we also would like to do with our behavioral coaches and academic coaches is align them to the work as well. Because, um, as we think about systems, one of the challenges that we've had historically, and one of you mentioned it, uh, is us working in silos. So we are coming out of the silos and really trying to look at everything that we're doing and making sure that everything is aligned. So as we think about restorative practices being the foundation, the first question we have to ask ourselves is how does it align? How does it line up? How does it, uh, fit in with restorative practices? And are the processes that we're implementing, are they restorative in nature? Oh, you want to say something?
So that, so the next one? No, I'm good, I'm good. You're doing good. They're on here. We're just on a different slide.
Yep. So again, I'm not going to read each of these slides, but if you have particular questions about the slides, because this was in the actual report. So what we tried to capture here was just the disparities in the areas that the district and the board identified as areas, uh, for disparities.
I read your report. I wasn't quite, quite frankly, I wasn't surprised, but I do want to know, what are the behaviors that students get suspended for? And if their, the suspensions are down, are those behaviors still happening and we're just ignoring them or are we doing something else? I mean, I, the numbers of suspensions to me seems very high. And I'm just wondering what it is that are the reasons for the suspensions that, what are the behaviors that our students have? And can PBIS or something like that help our students, um, sort of be learned that there's another way to react to something or whatever it is they're doing? I don't know.
And the answer to that is absolutely. So it's not just PBIS, it's not just restorative practices. What we are also working on as we take more of a systemic approach is exactly what you said, identifying the behaviors in which students are kicked out of a classroom. As an example, one of the categories that we have, that we've talked about for years that we need to really get rid of, it's called defiant behavior. So anything could fall under defiant behavior, but the other part of that is looking at this from K through twelve and saying, as we look at all the elementary schools, what gets a kid kicked out of a classroom and flinched should be the same thing that happens over at Edmonds Elementary School. So we want to really look at the reasons, cause and effect. So some of the categories that we are saying students are put out of a classroom for, we need to get rid of those categories. But before we can do that, we have to really train our teachers, our, as we are doing with restorative practices, with practices that are going to keep kids in the classroom. So what we are trying to accomplish is getting to a place where we're saying no more than maybe three behaviors should get a kid put out of the classroom and/or separated from school, uh, for suspension. The other thing that we are doing as we think about suspensions, we are looking at an alternative location, as we have talked about for a few years, for students that get separated from the school. We don't want them at home, we still want them connected to the school. But as we think about systems, we are looking at restorative practices, we are looking at PBIS. Each school has a restorative practice team that are trained and being trained to really identify and address specific behaviors that we can change and keep kids in the classroom. So it's more of a systemic approach in identifying some of the reasons with the planning room folks because they're going to be the second line of defense after teachers. If a kid's put out of the classroom, we are working with the planning room folks to see if they can do an intervention to get a kid back into the class. Does that answer your question, Q?
Yeah, because there must be strategies that we can teach our children. If they feeling that they want to be defiant, whatever it is they're doing, that they could do.
Yes.
That will not get them suspended.
And the thing, one of the other pieces, we are working with our behavioral coaches. The behavioral coaches will be working with us to also employ and learn restorative practices and not just deal with one teacher at a time, but also work with groups of teachers to really talk about different strategies to keep kids in the classroom.
I just want to make a plug for restorative practices. I'm not an expert in this the way Sparks is, but I've gone to the trainings and I'm so impressed with that way of thinking about students and people. We've started incorporating, you know, using circles with adults when we do professional development and things and it's so powerful. So I really think we're heading in the right direction with this. We're also just rethinking, like Sparks said, the, the way that we call behaviors, the way that we label behaviors. And so part of what we're working on now is sort of shifting away from some of these words like insubordination or, right, we love that one. So, and, and, and changing our language, changing our labeling of things and changing the way we respond to things and changing even the way our data categorizes these things. It's, it's really been, I would just say, amazing.
Commissioner.
Keep going.
Uh, so I'm going to go to, if it's okay with you all, um, where we are going with our next steps. And if you, again, if you, if you have any questions, uh, please feel free to, uh, stop me.
Which was slide?
Uh, we aren't looking, um.
Which slide do you want?
We, I'm sorry, I'm going to slide eight. The last slide.
Next steps.
Yes, the next steps. So going back to Commissioner Pillsbury's question around why do we have some of these, the disparities, one of the things that we really have to start thinking about, who are the students that are primarily impacted by the disparities? And as you can see through some of the data, it's marginalized kids, students that are given free and/or reduced lunch and students of color. So one of the things we have to really start to work on is bias because a lot of that starts in the classroom where us as the district, we as the district really needs to, really need to start working on equity and, uh, better outcomes for all students. And that is also part of the work that we're doing with, with restorative practices and building a restorative foundation. And again, as you think about restorative practices, it is not just for students. We have to think about restorative practices from the superintendent all the way down to cafeteria workers and everybody in the district, board members, family members and everybody. So as we think about systemic change, it is about all of us changing and being part of a better solution and better outcomes for all our students. Just hit the outcomes of students.
That's right, that's our, just our next step.
Uh, the other thing that has been a huge help this year, uh, we have devoted the entire year of district professional development to restorative practices, uh, with closing the achievement gap and also as we think about the alignment, we are aligning, uh, closing the achievement gap with restorative practices and better outcomes for students in the class. So as we think about academic success, what we do know, if we're not keeping kids in the classroom engaged and learning, we're not going to impact outcomes with the achievement gap. And the way we do that is by really thinking about that foundational work that we have to start with in elementary school and really start to think about as we build those foundations around reading, writing and math, we also have to focus on behavior because by the time a student gets to the middle school or the high school, if we have not impacted those behaviors, then we're not going to make a whole lot of impact by the time they're here. And I'll stop there and entertain questions.
Commissioner Carey, you had a question.
Yeah, I just have a quick question about restorative circles and, and I'm wondering if they're practiced in every classroom throughout the district regularly, regularly?
No, they're not.
Should they be? Should they be?
They, that is one of the goals this year. So this year, we are just thinking about, as we talked about, uh, with our foundational work, restorative practices in all the buildings. So we do have teams in all the buildings that are being trained as to how to facilitate a restorative circle because if the work is not done properly, you can do more harm than you do good.
Okay.
But that is one of the goals.
And I, and I was going to want, I was wondering what role the, uh, behavior coaches have. And there, there are three behavior coaches in the district, is that right? Three?
Yes.
And so do they bounce around at the different schools and provide the training in the different schools and, uh, run the restorative circles in some cases?
In some cases, but that is not the way it's structured. What we're trying to do is build in-house capacity with our teachers being used as trainers and facilitators, not just of restorative circles, but also restorative processes and the restorative interventions. As an example, we are talking about not suspending kids and possibly doing a restorative intervention if the infraction is not something that is major. So ideally, what we want is everybody, our teachers and other administrators to really be able to employ restorative processes to keep kids in school.
Thank you.
Commissioner Awal.
So this summer or, or early fall, you were supposed to have a training and somehow funding wasn't there or whatever. Is, is this something we should put into the budget then?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
No, well then.
No, absolutely. Uh, as we think about, um, what impedes the work is definitely funding and as we all, but the, what we have to also consider, as we reduce funding, we have to think about how do we build in school, in the district capacity? So that means bringing in the best trainers and the best facilitators we have in the state, which we do have employed with the district. And those folks are building capacity, training our teachers because I firmly believe with others, our teachers can be just as effective as some of the consultants that we bring in with the proper training. And that's why we're looking at this work for the entire year to really build that in-house capacity and district reliance on teachers and others.
Commissioner Curry.
Um, so thank you for being here and I know that, um, we've had some of these conversations at the D and E committee and, um, my question is about the budget. And, um, I know that the, uh, origins of restorative practice discussion began when, really in a partnership for change, when there were some visits to other schools in the region. And I know a group went out to Oakland, California, that was kind of a, you know, example of where we want to be, I don't know where they are now, but, um, so my question is about what is the annual budget allocation for restorative practices and what do you, what can, what have you been able to do for that in terms of training? And maybe that's not a question to answer right now, but as a budget point of information. And then the second question is, have you talked with, um, other schools in the region about maybe pulling resources for training, you know, for some big trainings? Would that, is there a savings opportunity?
No, so I think quite frankly, uh, Burlington School District is doing the largest trainings in the state. I think we have compiled, uh, the best team of practitioners in the state. I'm not going to say I think, I know. We have the best team in the state, we have the best practitioners in the state, we have done trainings and created processes around fidelity as far as outcomes and measures. We have an MOU, uh, with the University of Vermont. The resource offices are connected, we are connected to reclaiming futures, the police department, judges, uh, police, probation officers. We have a lot of community partners, so we are well underway in considering, uh, when Superintendent Obang came aboard, we had a budget of six thousand dollars and our consultants hadn't been paid in almost four months. The following year, I believe it was eight thousand dollars, then it went up to forty thousand dollars. And for what we're getting, uh, from the consultants for that money, uh, I have no questions about every dollar being spent in the best way possible. We've had, uh, two summer institute, four day institutes, tier one training, tier two training. We have done administrative trainings, we have done trainings for board members. So there's a variety of work that we have been able to do over the past two and a half years. I think, um, as we think about outcomes, we have seen suspensions go down and we are creating tools to really, uh, define whether or not restorative practices is having the real impact because we want to be able to look at data and say, yes, without a doubt, restorative practices and that foundational work that we're doing is having a major impact.
And that's, that's a great question around the budget piece and one of the concerns that I've had in building capacity up to that is to ensure that we have a plan that we can actually measure that our investment is actually paying back, right? Because you can go around and say, we're doing restorative practice and do all kinds of stuff all over the place and spend all kinds of dollars, but, uh, I think we're at the stage now that you will see some, um, some investment asks in terms of areas that we want. We feel confident that we're ready to kind of move forward and also, uh, Sparks and, and some of the collaborative team have been also been working with other departments because, you know, once again, it's not just, it's not just Sparks, restorative practices. We want to be a, a district, a system, sort of restorative practice approach, so through our special education, our EL, uh, department, so everyone's starting to have the conversation, what does that mean? And then also putting the dollars in together and supporting each other. Someone asked a question about the behavior coaches, the last conversation when the administrators were talking about their needs, they talked about, well, if we have behavior coaches, shouldn't we have them trained in restorative practices so they can be part of that capacity building as they go to schools and work with staff? And I said, yeah, we should, right? And so those are the steps that we're taking. But you will see, so I know we've got some, uh, one of the pieces that we, we've been talking about for the last couple of years is having, um, a alternative to, uh, suspension or displacement programs for students because we know the data they showed around instructional time, right? Less instructional time students lose, then less likely they're going to perform. And part of that is suspension. So we got to look at, okay, what are we doing for programming for especially those students that we've been doing interventions with? How do we get the wraparound, whether if it's socio-emotional and instructional piece? And so we're hoping that we've got a plan in place that we, we're ready to bring to the budget process as well.
I would just like to comment, um, and I appreciate what you said, Sparks, um, about our local resources as well. I know we have a relationship with Burlington and South Burlington or contract with their CJC, um, and that speaks to your working relationship with them and that mutual respect and, uh, I've seen it in action and, um, I'm just grateful for the local, uh, support that we receive, but that we would like to see the board, and I know as a systems leader, you'll be presenting your wish budget, uh, for next year, um, that will adequately fund this work throughout the entire district. So, thank you.
And the only other thing I would just like to quickly add, as Superintendent Obang just, uh, mentioned, as far as the work, I've been in the district twenty-five years and this, uh, work with restorative practices, uh, is one of the only things that I've seen this district really with restorative practices is one of the only things that I've seen this district really try to be consistent with. And it is not just me. We have a team of directors, our EL director, special services, Karen, I could just go on and on. And we are really working diligently at trying to make sure that we're not letting students fall through the cracks. But also, as we think about the climate, I have major concerns about the data as well, because I was a part of all that work. And we are taking serious steps to really impede that and change the climate in the district to be more welcoming for everybody. So as we move forward with this work, one of the things I firmly believe, in partnership, we can change Burlington. And that was the intent, as we thought about restorative practices, how do we really create a restorative city? And we're not going to create a restorative city if we are not working hand-in-hand in partnership to really serve the needs of our students and families and adults.
Well said.
Thank you. Drop the mic. And I want to acknowledge Director Maria Metashem, who is one of the leaders for our adult team. And she's been patiently here supporting our staff. And she very much is a spearhead around some of this work and through her EL work as well too. And look forward to her presentation down the road around our EL programming for sure.
And also wanted to recognize Commissioner Ivanka. Go ahead.
So thank you, Sparks, for this presentation. And I did want to let the board know that several months ago, Superintendent Obang did approve board representation on the restorative practices leadership team. So I've been attending these meetings monthly and just kind of keeping track of where the district is at with restorative practices.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I don't know where we are.
We are on monitoring, health insurance.
Oh, Nate, is he still here?
So just to give some rationale for this, we had asked, when we asked board members for agenda items, this had come up on a number of board members asking for an update where the district stood with regards to health insurance and benefits. So I know we talked about it a little bit earlier tonight. Thanks, Nate.
So, yep. One of the good news pieces to report is that Datapath recently sent out an update to all of its, I don't know, a lot of people, and talked about the effort that they had made to reprocess claims. So, short version is, they spent a lot of time trying to clean up the kind of mess that future planning left. At a certain point, they realized, you know what, we just need to essentially reprocess, redo all of the work that kind of future planning essentially did, reprocess all of those claims. So they went through that. And what they, you know, in, in kind of layman's terms, what they're doing is they're comparing how much money an individual recipient received from the benefit, right? Maybe you received $200 or $1,000 cumulatively from, from the HRA. And they're comparing that to the claims that they can compare, you know, that they can document. So ideally, you, you or your provider would have received, let's say, $1,000 in reimbursements, and they would have $1,000 of claims to offset that reimbursement. So they went through and they did that process for everyone. They ended up paying out something like, I put in my notes here, like over $800,000 in HRA reimbursements that, that they identified that people were owed that had not been paid. But that's obviously a huge chunk and goes a long way toward addressing some of those, you know, those woeful tales we, we heard about people who were waiting extended periods, going back again to like January, February, wherever it might have been, for reimbursement. So that's the good news, is there's a lot of progress there. They are dealing with some exceptions. By that mean like things that they weren't successfully able to reprocess in their automated way. For example, Burlington, we only had one when I checked with them, and I think we've got that resolved, so that's good. That doesn't mean that everyone's perfect right now, because there are situations where people, according to the work that Datapath has done, people owe money back to the plan. So for example, you've received $1,000 reimbursement, reimbursement, but you only have $800 in claims. And so that can be for two reasons. Number one, there are a variety of ways, such as using the debit card or double, like, that you could have had a duplicate claim. So you could legitimately owe money back to the plan. The second possibility is that Datapath simply doesn't have the information, the data, the backup it needs to justify that full amount. Not that it wasn't paid correctly, but just that they can't prove it. And so I know that there's, there's a certain amount of that out there. We don't know how much. But the key in this situation, certainly if you hear anyone bring this up, is having them call the customer service. And it's not information, it's not, it's not something the district can help with, let's put it that way. Like, we can't, we don't have your individual explanation of benefits or your individual receipts or anything of that nature. So we can't prove it. It's up to the patients to demonstrate that. And again, that information by and large can be obtained from, from the Blue Cross website, where you can print out all your explanation of benefits. So I'm kind of saying this in the interest of, if anyone happens to watch six hours of this, or whatever it's going to be, they will, they will have some of these answers. But we're working on a communication to update employees on that front. So it's just important to understand that, you know, there are still some issues out there. I think that they are really significantly improved. And every day now, we're, we're, we know that Datapath is sending out reimbursements to, to individuals. So all that is, is progress. But again, I think there's just still some cleanup from months and months ago. And oftentimes, we're not in a position in the district to actually resolve that on behalf of employees. And so one of the challenges for employees has been having to take the time to call and wait for Datapath customer service and that sort of thing. So it hasn't been, just saying that, easier said than done, right? You still have to call, and there have been times when, you know, wait times can, can be lengthy. We've talked to them about, you know, the, the kind of callback approach. You might have had that where you, rather than sit on hold, you get a call back when they're, when they're available. So that's a general status report. I don't know if there's any other particular questions about this, or things people hearing that they're wondering about?
Commissioner Curry?
Well, I'm just wondering, like, you know, I keep getting these questions from constituents and kind of relaying the same thing, but there just seems to be, I guess I'm confused about, after we've responded to their questions, then, you know, how are teachers getting this information? Like, how are staff getting this information? Are they getting it? Did they get it once? Are they getting it more than once? Do they get like, oh, friendly reminder, we can't actually do anything now? You know, so, because I just feel like the constituents think that we're just blowing it off or being unresponsive or not engaged or whatever.
Um, well, as I said, we're, so we're working, we periodically have sent out kind of blast emails to everyone. And I think that probably for some people, those work great. And for other people, it's a little bit, it's like too much information. It's hard to kind of distill it down into a, a few simple nuggets for people without then having people complain that you didn't give them all the, you know, so there's, there's a balance strike there. But we've been trying to periodically update employees on a kind of broad scale. In my experience, I think the people, you know, there are people just that call up our office and ask their individual questions. And that's been the most helpful for me to be able to understand what is that issue. And sometimes I'm able to look in and see that what the employee believes is happening in their account isn't quite accurate. And we, you know, I've, I've met with, you know, some, some employees, we've just talked through their accounts and they've wanted to show it to me. So we'll, anything from like kind of that generic across-the-board communication, email, blast, to individual one-on-one meetings? It's just, there is a point that unfortunately comes where we often have to kind of say, this is as far as we can take you, and, you know, that's not the finish line.
Then you're going to tell that to the employee directly.
Yeah, we, we do tell them that, but...
We could recommend that.
That doesn't make it any easier for them to...
Yeah, sure, but at least that they have...
Windows P.
I'm just combing through their website and going through all their claims and so forth. I mean, we're all...
Windows P.
And then extend.
I would say one thing to Nate's follow-up is that, you know, they, we were proactive as a district in the in-service at the start of school. We worked closely with the BEA and district leaders to create a responsive effort to identify those individuals that still had outstanding claims since, you know, January. And then just to follow up with, you know, the recent events of grievance, that we are now in a position where we're managing it, or we can speak to that.
Right, there was a grievance around this. It's kind of, it's been suspended. We have a little, a few follow-up questions before we kind of go back at the, at it. But ultimately, what we're aiming probably to do is just do another outreach that says, okay, if you still think you have an issue now that the reprocessing is done, you know, kind of, we want to collect some of that information. But again, we have to do it judiciously, because we get to a point where just saying you have an issue, as, as Martine knows, it, you know, like, until we have the enough detail to really analyze the nature of the issue or whether or not there is an issue, we can't be that helpful. On the other hand, there's some people who don't want to say, well, I visited this doctor on this day and here's what happened, and who are you, by the way? Right? So there's people who have different degrees of comfort in sharing their, that personal information, which is completely justifiable, but it also limits our ability to follow up sometimes. So...
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Director Labrie. Last item on the superintendent report, not the last agenda, just the last item under that.
Oh.
It's good news. And unfortunately, we lost Shelley Mathias, principal at Edmonds. We wanted to recognize Edmonds and Shelley's leadership. Shelley's sort of spearheaded PBIS for a number of years and has been recognized across the state. And we received this letter, or I received this letter, sort of acknowledging Edmonds as an example, as an exemplar of school. And you can see the, the criteria there that they, they met, you know, in terms of implementing universal PBIS and behavior data information and completing self-assessments. They've done some really intense work with the entire staff over the last few years to get these kind of results to be recognized by the state. So Shelley, you're not here, but... That would be the good news for...
I'll accept on Shelley's behalf.
Thank you.
You prefer to lengthy speech here and her? No.
I'm going to move right along to budget and planning, a monitoring report, which you did receive. I think it was last week or two I sent it out. Hopefully, I'm sure you've had a chance to glance through it. So I've got Director Labrie here to answer any questions that you might be interested into querying. And then I would propose to give this to the board to receive as presented.
Thank you.
I, I...
Commissioner, where?
I'll just put it out there. It's 11:15. This is a very important part of what we do. I, I don't know if it's worth tabling so that we can do it when we're not fried, and I guess I'm only speaking for my own brain here.
I second that. But how does that...
Will this actually affect the salaries or, or actual employment of people if we table this?
No, this is a monitoring report.
It says...
It's just a monitor, well, not just a monitor. It's a monitoring report around budgeting and planning. So, no, it won't, there isn't any immediate impact on any staff or anything.
Talk about the prior years.
Commissioner, Commissioner Brown?
There's no discussion with a motion to table, I understand. But seeing that it's 11:15 and I'm already done...
Let's see what?
So I, we should have a time certain to, to take this up again. I don't think we should punt it for another month. If we're going to have another meeting this month, I would suggest we put it on the agenda for as soon as possible.
Thank you. I agree. I will do so with Superintendent Obang at a mutually decided time, the last week of November. Thank you for that suggestion. Yep. And we appreciate the work that went into this. So yes, it deserves time. All right, with that, and Superintendent, okay, Obang, you okay with this?
Okay, yeah, yeah, absolutely. Last item was under 2.8, communication to the board. And this was supposed to be a discussion. It looks like people aren't in the mood for a discussion, so I would...
This is also important.
This is also important.
It's also important. So do we want to defer this as well?
Make a motion to table this? Yep.
Can we not have the last? We're going to do something on budgeting anyway, so can we do these two at that meeting?
Yes, I would suggest that, yep. So make a motion to table this.
I so move.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, we will table that. Thank you, Superintendent Obang, for your understanding and readiness. Next on the agenda is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Before we adjourn, I just sent some props over to Bonnie. It was her first...
Yay, Bonnie! Yay!
Very well said.
Do we have a discussion on the adjournment?
Thank you.
25 hours and 15 minutes.
So move.
All those in favor? Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions, we'll pass. Thank you very much.